To order please! The right virtual Mayor of the City of Cambridge, councillor Fosord.
Firstly, I would like to welcome members of the public for this meeting of the City Council. I would like you to note that the request has been received to film the meeting. Now, in accordance with the City Council's protocol, I would now ask if any member of the public who does not wish to be filmed, if he is in case. So if anyone doesn't want to be in this filming meeting, just raise your hand. Thank you very much, as no one was indicating. Now, during this first section of the agenda, the election of a new mayor and deputy mayor, members of the public are more than welcome to take over from us. I would however ask that members of the public remain seated. I would now ask my chaplain to open the meeting.
Today is a very special day. I don't think the microphones are working, are they?
Yeah.
Okay. Normally if you respond to that, I'd say, "Don't drive me, you." There are some things about today which are very special because it's a day of changes. New people elected, some people not selected, and you've got new chairs as well. So a day of changes. Change is not always easy. But also, it's a time I believe to say, "Thank you." We don't always say thank you. It's always easy to say thank you when things go well. And not always easy when things don't go so well. And the difficulty of democracy always is that there are both winners and losers. And those who are deselected have served our city, as much as those who have been selected. And sometimes those who have gone are easily forgotten. And yet they have served the city. And we want to say thank you to all who have served. But not always is thanks given or received. It reminds me of a story of a pastor who spent a year freely serving in a church and on his last Sunday, his hat went around the convocation for a goodwill offering. And when it returned to the pastor, he noticed it was empty. He didn't flinch, he raised his hat to heaven and he said, "Ah, thank you Lord, that I got my hat back from the convocation." And in some ways, in a sense, it's where one can give thanks even when it's not being offered or thanked. Some may feel discarded and unappreciated. I've noticed near the chamber that sometimes the public aren't always appreciative of decisions that are made, especially if it goes against their viewpoints. And that is true on both sides of the House. But I believe, like we would say to our children, we need to say thank you, even to those who do things maybe not that we agree with. Yet we can neither expect nor demand thanks. We have to learn to do without receiving appreciation sometimes. Nobody was saying thank you to Jesus when he was dying on the cross. No one dared recognise what he was doing. No one, when he gave his last breath on the cross, said, "Jesus, thank you." In fact, the whole abuse at him unlocked him. And there's something about sacrificial love which Jesus demonstrates which is never always appreciated. And part of our service, and your service, to our city, whether it is appreciated or not, by some at least, it is appreciated. And from my perspective here, having seen you work here, heard your debates, heard your variety of ways and how you do it, no matter where you come from, on the whole, what you're trying to do is serve this city, no matter from what stance. My prayer, and another prayer of the churches in Cambridge, is that you will continue to do that and that this city will be served as well in the future as it has in the past. Jesus' last words were, "Forgive them, they don't know what they're doing." And sometimes you may say that to each other. "Forgive them, they don't know what they're doing." But forgiveness and thanks are basic. And therefore, for me and for my last time here, thank you for having me and listening to me in these short moments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the formal agenda. And agenda of what? Election of Mayor. I call for nominations for the new Mayor for the ensuing municipal year. Councillor Price.
Councillor Gerry Birdman's on there.
Is there a second elect? Are there any other nominations? No. So are there any further speeches? Councillor Price.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Because it's important, I think, despite there being not an election or a decision to be taken on that, I think it's important that we isolate a few words about Gerry. And for many people that were here this time last year, some of this is a bit deja vu. However, Gerry Birdman was born on the 11th of November 1955. Sorry.
You made that up.
I know. In a mortally home in Cork, the Republic of Ireland. At the age of 10 months, she contracted polio and was admitted to hospital where she remained until she was seven years old. When she left hospital, it wasn't possible to find her mother as she had been brought to England. The nuns however managed to eventually trace her living in Cambridge. So Gerry was brought over to the city by the nuns. Unfortunately, the reunion didn't work out and Gerry was taken to the Midfield Children's Home at Oakington for fostering. The Church of Our Lady and the English Baptist in Hill Grove, Cambridge issued a notice that a disabled child was indeed of a home and a couple came forward to foster Gerry. They formally adopted her when she was 12 years of age and, for the first time, she was able to enter mainstream school, St Bead School, Birdman Grove, Cambridge, where she learned to read and write. Gerry left school at the age of 15 after just three years of formal schooling. And then her life changed. She has had her two daughters who have given her eight wonderful grandchildren. Gerry's been an active campaigner in Cambridge for more than 20 years, standing for the City Council at five occasions without winning. Twice in King's Hedges and three times in his chestnut. But coming back time after time, taking each unsuccessful campaign in her stride, coming back for more, stronger and more determined. But as the Gerry world knows, a fighter on so many levels, a campaigner for to save the people across the city, but not exclusively so. She's more than just a political campaigner, she's a very keen traveller and always looking to push herself to take on more adventures. Never letting her disability get in the way. She has, apparently, swung with dolphins. And I found that amazing because I thought the chair was into it. She regularly goes off with her partner Alan in their Land Rover on a range of off-road activities that I have to say beyond me, but nothing fazed Gerry. In the year Gerry was successfully elected to the council, a strong part of her campaign was to prevent the closure of the line yard toilets. With help of others, Gerry organised and collected the largest number of signatures to a petition ever presented to this council. She spent many hours in her wheelchair sitting outside those toilets, not a great place to be in the cold, gathering signatures and support from people all over the city and indeed all over the world, many, many visitors to Cambridge. And she conducted that whole campaign with a smile and never once did she doubt what she was doing was right. Once elected, that campaign continued, this time as a councillor. A working party to oversee progress which eventually led to the decision to move the toilets upstairs and inside, being overturned. And since then, Gerry's been on a board overseeing their refurbishment. And, I understand, one of her first duties as Mayor would be to open the refurbished toilets.
It's open, Gerry.
But to everybody else out there, a demonstration of what can be achieved with the right amount of dedication and determination. She's also keen to ensure that people understand how difficult it can be for disabled people trying to navigate their way around the city centre, avoiding the myriad of street furniture narrowing some of the pavements. And shortly after being elected, she organised wheelchairs for a group of councillors to do just that. I was one of those councillor samples for then Mayor Catherine Nemo Smith. Gerry had prepared a route, knowing all the most difficult areas and choosing them. And it certainly opened my eyes as it did others in that little group to the difficulties faced. And of course, the attitude of some people towards people in wheelchairs was totally shocking. And Gerry said, sadly, that was normal for many people in wheelchairs. Gerry's helped me to look at plans more closely when doing planning items on the North Kerry Committee. She can spot a disabled toilet door that opens inwards and always tell you why that's not good planning. Only last week, Mr Mayor, Gerry led the Queen at the garden party, shook hands and had a conversation with her. That will stand the Queen in good... Oh no, that will stand the Gerry in good stead. Many dignitaries she will encounter during her term of office. I think you would all agree that that's a very long way from her beginning to the ball. Her family, many of whom are here with her, are all proud of Gerry. I am proud to have Gerry as a friend, Mr Mayor. And I believe Cambridge will be proud to have her as its next first citizen. Thank you.
Now, any further speeches?
I would like to support councillor Gerry Birdman's appointment as the next Mayor of Cambridge. Councillor Bird and I served together as paylees just here. And this year, we've taken many functions as paylees in my service as Deputy Mayor, during which time we got to know each other well. We were both very privileged to be invited to represent the City of Cambridge at the Majesty's Garden Party last week at the Buckingham Palace, which is not a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And I am glad I have shared the experience with a colleague and a friend. Councillor Bird will bring her own unique style to the role and I am confident she will make a positive contribution towards the ongoing success of the Mayor of Cambridge. I wish councillor Bird every success.
Now, there's a speaker next to me, so I think I can cease to break that. So I declare councillor Bird, Mayor of Cambridge, for the ensuing municipal year. It would be great pleasure to say that. At this moment, can I ask the council guests to remain in their seats for a while while roving takes place? The mayoral party goes to leave with councillor Bird and we will all be back in different seats in a few minutes. Thank you very much.
To order please! To order please! The right virtual Mayor of the City of Cambridge, councillor Gerry Bird.
I'm going to ask the Mayor to sign an official declaration of acceptance of office. I, Gerry Bird, have been elected to the office of the Mayor of Cambridge City Council. I declare that I take the office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of according to the best of my judgement and ability. Okay, I'd like to make a special speech to Reverend, acceptance of the office. I'm absolutely thrilled to be elected Mayor of this great city and pledged to undertake the role to the absolute best of my ability. Since becoming councillor for Eastchester Ward in 2011, I campaigned long and hard for residency in my area, especially on behalf of the people across the city who have disabilities. My work on behalf of to save the people will surely continue during the forthcoming year when I shall endeavour to raise the profile of many issues experienced by those people in our city who have a disability. I'm grateful to my fellow councillors for electing me and giving me the opportunity. I thoroughly enjoyed serving as one of the council's ceremonial bird bailiffs, which has given me an insight into some of the civic duties I shall be required to carry out. I now look forward to the year ahead with great enthusiasm. I'm grateful to cadet Corporal Adelash Motala, I hope I pronounced that right, who represents the Army Cadet Force for agreeing to be my Mayor's Cadet. Welcome. I would also like to thank Reverend Ruth Adams of St George's Church, Chesterton, for agreeing to be my Mayor's Chaplain. And I hope that you will both enjoy your new roles and will gain an insight into local democracy and the civil life of Cambridge as a result. May I make a very special mention to my partner Alan, who is a tower of strength and always giving me support and encouragement. Alan will serve as my Mayor's Consort during the forthcoming year. The charities I agree to support are Disability Cambridge, Disability Cambridge helps to save the people in the city and all over the county. And I'd like to thank people whether all the chief exec for coming to see us today. The Toms Trust is another charity of mine and I would also like to thank Deborah Whitlie for coming today. And I hope that I'll be able to help your charities. I hope that you will share my passion to assist such worthy causes and be able to participate in fundraising events I hope to host on their behalf. Thank you very much. Okay, I call for nominations for the appointment of Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to propose councillor Robert Dryden.
And do... Are there... Sorry, are there any other nominees? Can I get somebody's second?
Yeah, councillor Ashley's second, councillor.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any further speeches?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and fellow councillors, all the guests. Let me be the first of very many to congratulate you for your literal elevation. And indeed, I must say, having sat there myself, the best seat in the city. I've got no spin prepared, so this is what I sort of call winging it. So that's what I'm going to do. So I won't be standing here for very long. But what I would like to say is that councillor Dryden, having sat in that seat twice himself, did almost as good a job as I'm sure that you will in the coming year, will be a tower of strength to you. You have not had the benefit of sitting in Deputy Mayor's chair beforehand, so it's quite a splash when you hit the water. But you'll be used to that with a dolphin, so you'll be fine. But councillor Dryden will support you with his normal integrity, his honesty and his support. I had the pleasure to nominate councillor Dryden as Mayor 10 years ago at this very meeting, my first entrance into this chamber. And I remember it well because we walked through that door on that occasion. And as we walked through, he stood beside me and he said, "What are you going to say?" I said, "I don't know how to say anything." So we had a good four or five minutes to prepare a speech, so that was fine. But councillor Dryden will be an excellent support for you with his experience, as I say, his integrity and his infinite patience. I know he's patient because he still likes me, so he must be fairly patient. So it gives me no hesitation whatsoever to propose councillor Dryden as Deputy Mayor of this great city of Cambridge.
My pleasure, councillor Dryden, Deputy Mayor of the City of Cambridge, for the ensuing municipal year. Can I invite councillor Dryden to take his place? And councillor Ashton?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few words for the second elect councillor Dryden. Nothing can subvert councillor Dryden. Everybody knows councillor Dryden in this wonderful city. Councillor Dryden is now entering his 20th year. We hear phrases like "marmite people", "you're either loving or eating". As I've gone round this city, people love it. I've been three years a councillor and in those three years, I've gone down many walls, knocking on doors. And it's amazing that no matter which part of the city you go to, and I've been to Longsey, Chesterton, Uquaidis, and you knock on a door and people go, "Robbie, is that you? Are you Sammy Yatnerstall?" So Robbie's gone throughout the city and he's done a sterling job in the past this year. This will be his first job as Deputy Mayor. And one thing that does subvert Robbie is a few years ago, for those Sunday Times readers, they did an article on our wonderful city about the changes that were taking place in Cambridge and the vast amount of housing that was taking place. And they wanted a court. And as I read through, I thought, "Where will the court be from? If I take it there, finally..." Where is this court coming from? And guess who the court was from? Councillor Dryden. Even the Sunday Times recognised that he wanted us to think about Cambridge. So I'm going to give him a warm hand to say.
I, Robert Dryden, have been elected to the office of Deputy Mayor of Cambridge City Council. Declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of according to the best of my judgement and ability.
Okay, agenda of our items three. Confirmation of minutes? Sorry, confirmation of minutes. Bird crew has a correct record of minutes on the meeting of the council held on the 3rd of April 2014, which are on the agenda, I think pages 11 to 30.
Just this once.
Okay. Agenda item four. To note the returning officers' report that the following have been elected to offices of councillor. Would the council note that the report of the returning officer and a list of elected councillors are included in your agenda? I would like to welcome councillors Avery, Austin, Baggant, Holland, Moore, Perry, Ratcliffe, Robinson, Sarus, Sennett and Smart, and who won seats at the regular elections held on the 22nd of May. I sincerely hope you will enjoy your work on behalf of the city. I would also like to congratulate councillor Tantray, the person Roberts and Herbert on successfully contesting their seats. Appointment of the Mayor's Chaplain. It gives me great pleasure to appoint Ruth Adams to be my Chaplain. Ruth and I will be a great help to you. She has marvelous work at St George's Chapel in Chesterton. And I hope you will get to meet her and be able to come to one of our events at the chapel, Ruth. Appointment of the Mayor's Cadet. As part of the council's aim to promote local democracy and to invite young people to work of the council, I am delighted that the Mayor's Cadet has been appointed. I'm delighted to introduce this year's cadet, Corporal Adelash Motala, to represent the Army Cadet Force. The Mayor's pointed out that I forgot to put the Mayor's direction as bad on, so I apologize to the Mayor. I'll do that now. Okay, agenda item seven, resolution of thanks to outgoing Mayor. Councillor Catherine Smart will move the following resolution of thanks to the outgoing Mayor Paul Saunders. This council expresses its appreciation for the manner in which the duties of the Mayor were discharged by the councillor Paul Saunders during his period of office, and that the common seal be affixed to a copy of this resolution for presentation to him. Can I ask councillor Smart to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and may I also congratulate you on your elevation, shall we use the word, and I do hope you have a good year, a really, really good year. Though I will admit, I think you've got a hard act to follow, because I think councillor Saunders did his duty as Mayor in such a way which typical, in warm, friendly, tolerant, accepting, being really, really accepting of all the people in Cambridge, and which was appreciated by them. He has got that very warm manner, which I think a lot of people appreciated. I think, I must mention, that for quite a lot of the time, he was under considerable difficulty. As some people know, he had bitten into his leg, and the Mayor's Day out difficult, dangerous day, the Mayor's Day out. He did, he said, and that triggered something else, and he was under considerable difficulties for about six months. I don't think many of us realize, with the possible exception of the sergeant at base, what the problem was, he was working under. But he, because all the time, he was still that warm, friendly person, and I really do think we owe him a debt of gratitude because he worked through it. It actually seemed clear when he went to his favorite holiday place, that place Cuba, that we're not supposed to mention, but that's his favorite holiday place, and for some reason, it seemed clear up there, and I'm only too glad that for him, for his sake, that he managed to finish the year in style with a considerable less pain. But the way that he did, I think, very much deserved that, the resolution that you have read out by the Mayor, he really did the city proud, and therefore I would like to move for voting赞成.
Can I call on councillor Mongas to second the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, congratulations, you look good. Mayor Saunders, on behalf of the whole Labour group, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work and efforts as Mayor this year. As you will know only too well, it was a huge commitment, involving a vast number of engagement throughout the year. I've never heard it said that you've been anything other than pertussive, calm and engaging. You've carried out your duties with a smile on your face and brought great warmth to your position. You are a gentleman and have conducted the chairing of the council with professional dignity and efficiency. We hope you enjoyed your time in the position and wish you well in all that you do from here on in, unless of course you stand next to me in your own seat.
May I ask councillor Howard to please speak?
Well, I'd just like to add to the comments that both councillor Smart and councillor Drayden have contributed. I knew of Paul Saunders by reputation before he became a councillor, because he'd worked closely with my brother-in-law, so he's obviously done a lot more in this city before he was a councillor. I share his interest in Cuba as a place on the planet. It's a sign, I haven't had time to get there like yourself, but it is a sign of a healthy world, that there are interesting and sometimes old countries, and certainly there are different strands of ideas there that we can all learn from. So I'd just like to add our appreciation for, you had a great year, we'd like to see you again, thank you.
And I'll also give you to speak.
I too would like to thank all for the service achieved as given to the city. I wonder whether his frequent visits to Cuba have been an attempt to find some radicalism which he hasn't found at home? In any event, we shall miss you, you have done a tremendously good job. Everything which has been said about your warmth and smiley personality is utterly true, and on behalf of the greatly involved independent group, I would like to say thank you very well.
May I ask for the motion to the vote, please? Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Councillor Deppis?
Paul Saunders is the 807th Mayor of Cambridge, and apart from being a great friend, he has been an extremely popular mayor. We are all very sad to see him go. To report malty, the bar was raised. Looking at the weekly piece, I believe he took as many, if not more, engagements than any of his predecessors. Not only did he have to deal with more than 300 engagements this year, he had to preside and steer skillfully some very difficult council meetings here in this chamber, and having to deal with several very lively and intelligent councillors. I was astounded by his dedication and workload that he undertook when I was tasked with filling his shoes in March, when he was away on holiday in Cuba. He represented the Mayor's Office in the most excellent manner. His charm, his natural rickety look, his wonderful manner, all helped to make a real impact, and his kindness passed so many people throughout Cambridge. He sold Cambridge and the melody to the world by managing to invite international TV crews filming in this council and in Cambridge, and showing these films by a satellite to the whole world. Paul, I was very privileged to serve as your deputy. Thank you, and good luck on whatever interests you may wish to pursue from now on.
May I ask if there's anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, then can I put the motion to the vote, please? All those in favour? Thank you, Chief Mayor. And I ask the outgoing Mayor Paul Saunders to type a short speech in response to the motion.
I'm sure the emphasis wasn't short. I think I should check the constitution, I couldn't see a letter to address this, although the legal office did say, "Mayor's discretion applies", as always, so perhaps I ought to... And also, might perhaps a hot day, I believe some football stuff tonight, so you're probably going to get on before that. Firstly, as I'll be one of the first to congratulate on your mayor, it's well deserved, and I think she'll have a wonderful year, and really enjoy it. On my part, a few notes of thanks, I'll have a place. The Mayor's Office, the mace bearers, sports specific events beyond Chris Trankel, our sergeant at base, and Sue Edwards, our civic training officer. Madam Mayor, these are your support network, they're your new family, your new best friends, they look after you, you really appreciate that. My Mayor's Cadet, my sergeant Brown, thank you. My champion, your tailor, my dear former Mayor, George Whitlass, thank you very much. Last year's bailiffs, councillor Bird, thank you. Brown, of personal swastika. And in fact, councillors across the chamber, all sides, have been very supportive, very encouraging and all sorts of fun. A special mention to the experts who've been able to have a particular perspective and give you particular advice since Callum Jemmy here. And a special mention for Russell Banglison.
I haven't bought them, you're lucky.
They're all here today. But most of all, as we get, the people of Cambridge, it's been a real privilege to share precious moments with so many people from last year, so many wonderful events and so many wonderful people. From major events like the huge crowds that I recently stood with, Cambridge United in the Gilbert Hall balcony, celebrating huge fans' success. So altogether, it's quieter places like the small wall as our community centre, presenting Cambridge English Language Society's exhibit to a group including adult veterans, where they're really invited by their friends and families, but both equally important in many ways. In the end, I can't tell you what matters most as Mayor, the truth is that it's all important. It's all matters, it's all special, it's all around Cambridge. So my final words, my years may have been an honour, it's been a privilege, but best of all, it's been an education. I've learnt so much about my city, and I leave a impression for me, that's actually very good. But my severe thanks to you all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, may I ask you to step forward and receive your Hall Mayor bar badge? We know you will wear it in great pride at civic occasions in the future. Okay, item eight, apologies, the Mayor's announcements. No apologies have been received. It's my pleasure also to welcome a group of students from North of Cambridge Academy. Welcome, and I hope you enjoy the day. I'm so pleased that you have come along to watch the Mayor make the ceremony. It's also good to see representatives of the Castle Townsmen's Guild, welcome, thank you, and some students from the University of Cambridge, thank you very much. Pacific Church Service on Sunday the 15th, the Bodleum will be preached by the Holy Trinity Church this coming Sunday on the 15th of June at 9:30 AM. Members have received details of the civic occasion, and if you have not yet notified, your attendance, please, can you do so today? Proclamation of the Midsummer Fair, Wednesday 18th of June 2014. The proclamation of the Midsummer Fair takes place next Wednesday, the 18th of June, and details have been circulated. Please do support the civic occasion if you possibly can. The outgoing Mayor's Dinner is Thursday the 26th of June. A final reminder, if anyone is planning to attend the dinner at Corpus Christi College to mark the term of office of Paul Saunders, will they please arrange to purchase tickets to Sue Edwards today? Armed Forces Day is the 28th of June. In support of the National Armed Forces Day, it's been agreed that the Armed Forces Flag will be flown from the Young Pool from Monday the 23rd of June for one week. Mayor's Day Out, the details of this year's Mayor's Day Out is Thursday the 21st of August. The support council of students, coaches, assisting guests with disabilities, etc., is greatly valued each year. It's a fun day, mostly appreciated by those who take part, and if anyone could possibly give a hand this year, please do let Sue Edwards know, and she will cast her name through the Arts and Recreation Team. That's Thursday the 21st of August, and the venue, once again, is Great Yarwood. I would now like the elections of the bailiffs. I call nominations to fill four vacancies of the bailiffs. Can I ask nominations to be moved and sent? Councillor Robb Gudas? Councillor Perry? I'd like to propose Sir Gudas and Russell Pearson as bailiffs. Do I have any seconds, please? I'm going to go with councillor King.
I would nominate councillors Paul and Whitlass.
And do you have a second, though? O'Reilly, councillor O'Reilly? This includes ceremony of the annual meeting. I would also propose councillor Shakur Mehta for the office of Mayor. Okay, is there a second, though? Oh, yes. Okay, can the councillor tell me if they support the motions for the five bailiffs? Do we have a vote on that? Yeah? Thank you very much. Okay, yes, sorry. This includes ceremony of the annual meeting. They'll now form a one-hour agenda for lunch. Members, guests, members, students from the North Cambridge Academy, students from the University of Cambridge, representatives of the Castle Townsman's Guild, all would like to join me in this morning hall. Very sorry, I've told it's a large hall. Very sorry, I've told it's a large hall. You'll have to say, you're going back for my last one, thank you.
The right worshipful Mayor in seated Cambridge, councillor Jerry Bird.
Welcome back. Members declare any interest in the items to be considered. On the readout list of items, please indicate that particular point you wish to declare an interest, and explain the practice nature of your interest. Agenda item 10, recommendation committees which are for adoption, civic affairs committee adoption. Agenda item 11, 12, annual statement adoption, annual offices procedure. Agenda item 14, oral questions. Agenda item 15A, motion A. Agenda item 15... Agenda item 15B, motion B. Members are reminded that they can declare any interest at any time during the meeting, if anything occurs to them during the debates. Item 10, to consider the recommendation of committees for which are for adoption. We now show recommendations of the Civic Affairs Committee on the 2nd of June 2014. Recommendations can be found on page 32 of your agenda pack. The Chief Executive has advised me that councillor Brit has resigned from the post of leader to enable a new election to take place. Do we have a nomination of the leader of the council? Councillor Bensley.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on your elevation. Please see how they're all dressed. It gives me very great pleasure, it does give me very great pleasure to nominate my colleague, councillor, colleague, councillor Lewis Hurley to be leader of the council.
Do we have a second now? Do we have any, do we have any other nominations? I declare that councillor Herbert is elected as leader. Congratulations, councillor Herbert. I understand that councillor Brit would like to say a few words.
Madam Mayor, thank you, congratulations to you. And I'd like just to say a word of congratulations to councillor Herbert on his appointment as leader of the council. He, like I, I think were the youngest councillors on our respective councils in the 1980s. I was helping to end central conservative control and accounting to the western here. He was testing conservatism in government on the GLC. Whereas my former councillor still thrives after a fashion today. I do hope he will take better care of this councillor. Except under the conditions, I think that there'll probably be one situation in which all sides of this council may accept an abolition, and that is if we must be replaced by a unitary council achieving the vocation I think we all in the city and its area have. I do hope that councillor Herbert will enjoy the councillor leader role, that he's looked forward to for so long. But we also on this side hope that he won't get too comfortable. I have managed, complete privilege... I have managed, complete privilege, to be leader of the council in this state of city. I'm proud of the many things we on this side and our little democratic predecessors have achieved here. I will now be rummaging round in my wardrobe to done on a future suitable version of the Leader of the Opposition's pullover, which councillor Herbert has so excellently modelled over the past few years. And in fact seeing the out top of sharp dark suits on the other side, we could have perhaps done this much more cheaply by arranging some swaps. I'm not volunteering a gas surprise. I'd also like to put on the public record from this side, our thanks to the Chief Executive and her entire staff, right across the council, for the support they've provided to us over 14 years. Though it's sometimes, in some places, regarded as unfashionable to say so, many of them have made a career out of going the extra mile for the people of Cambridge, and that's not said nearly enough. The commitment, pride, and ownership in this council is remarkable, and it's an asset which I hope the new administration over there will take good care of. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bensley. Please note that the amended motion on Appendix 1, Appendix 2, Appendix 3 are circulated at Civic Affairs and be found on pages 115 of the council's information pack. I would now invite the leader to speak to changes he is making to executive responsibilities and to confirm membership of the executive. Councillor Redd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it was good to hear people like the protesters who lasted with the council. And I take up as good wishes, I was looking for them, and they were in there. Mayor, it is right that when a new administration takes over and when there are changes to executive council responsibilities and committees, that they are brought to this council. The committees and system of governance is the property of all of the councillors as well as the city. And I do have to note that some of these changes in the past have just gone through without really proper explanation. So first of all, I would like to announce, because it is in the role of the leader to actually choose the executive councillor team, that for our side, the six executive councillors are councillor Owens, councillor O'Reilly, councillor Roberts, councillor Blenko, councillor Price, and councillor Johnson. And if I then go into the responsibilities of the six councillors, they're in your pack, and hopefully also there's a useful diagram on page 51 of the council agenda. There are significant strengths in the system of governance that this council has. And like councillor Bick, we've grown up in a system of committee rule within councils. And what the council has is a hybrid system. And the strength of it is that every member of this council has a power, a role. And there isn't this kind of division that there has been in some councils whereby a term 'front bench' and 'back bench' is used. All councillors, as far as I'm concerned, on this council are front line councillors. Now, there isn't really any distinction. But clearly, within the way the powers are structured, there are clear roles. So councillor Owens, well firstly if I just describe the role that I'm taking on. In terms of strategy and transformation, essentially that is the role of the external partnerships. But it's particularly taking on the challenging aspect that we need to balance the book. And I'll talk in the end of statements about that inheritance. But so it's an issue of transformation, simply to have achieved the improvements that we must through our city that we have to transport. In the past, the leader has also taken on the role of leading on finances. And I would be happy to do that, but I've never thought that that is the right approach. I've always thought that finance requires a specific focus. And so finance and resources is to be led by councillor George Owens. There has been a comment that we don't have climate change in the title. I mean, we could have job titles that go on for half a page and more, but councillor Owens will lead on climate change, recognising both its importance and the fact that it's crosscutting across the council. And so the role of the Strategy and Resources Committee is to have to be scrutinised and to make decisions, or recommend its view before the executive councillors take decisions on both of those portfolios. Housing, we recognise as, in our view, has not been given sufficient attention. Obviously, there have been a range of good initiatives, particularly councillor Smart has been very able and effective executive councillor for housing. There is a lot more to do, and housing is a major issue. So councillor Kevin Price is the executive councillor for housing. And there will be obviously a role for the tenants, because they also play a key part, particularly in terms of managing the council's own housing stock. Two executive councillors will report to the Environment Planning Committee, will be part of that in terms of consulting and using scrutiny for that. A large part of our agenda is going to be responsible to councillor Pete Roberts. And Environment, Waste and Health has broadly the same responsibilities as currently, although I think it's slightly changed in terms of the public health role. And councillor Kevin Blenko, who has considerable experience in planning, will take the lead on planning policy transport. So the difference is that the Public Places Agenda is moving across to the Community Services Committee. So the Environment Planning Committee has two technical councillors linked to it, and then the Community Services Committee has Community Arts and Recreation, where councillor Richard Johnson has that portfolio. It's broadly the same as, I think, was called wellbeing in the past. We think this is a clearer title. Again, we could add a few other words to it, but there's clearly a big role for the city in terms of culture and leather. And last but not least is the Deputy Leader of the late Corinna O'Reilly, who will lead on City Centre and Public Places. And that role also takes account of communications and consultation. Clearly, there are a range of issues with the City Centre that need to be addressed. And there's a range of the environment, it's right across the city open spaces, and also just the improvement of various public realm. And a lot of decisions, I think, as councillor O'Reilly has pointed out, there's a lot of issues to sort out. So those are the changes to the structure, and obviously, it's been civic affairs. It's not a revolutionary change. I think councillor Bick's frightened that I'm going to suddenly change everything in my way. I would remind him that the Great London Council was not abolished by Peter Easton. It was abolished by the Tories, and London needed a seat of government, and suffered much for 10 or 15 years, irrespective of who might be Mayor currently.
Okay, thank you councillor Herbert. Civic Affairs has also recommended the council to make changes as quickly and responsibilities to reflect in vice executive responsibilities. So can we take a vote, please? Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, appointment of committees for 2014-15. We now turn to the appointment of committees for 2014. Does the council approve the appointments of committees as updated? A copy which is available in the information pack on your seats on pages 16 to 19. Is that approved? We turn to the appointment of chairs and vice chairs for 2014-15. Does the council approve the nominations of chairs and vice chairs as updated? A copy which is available in the information pack on your seats on page 20.
Agreed.
We turn to the appointment of the council's independent person and deputy, which can be found on page 67 of your agenda packs. Does the council confirm the appointment of Mr Shane Brady as the council's independent person? Mr Robert Bennet as the chair of council's deputy independent person for the new civil year for 2014-15? We turn to the civic council appointments to the Conservatives of the River Cam, which can be found on page 69 of your agenda packs. Does the council confirm the appointment of councillor O'Reilly in the place of board council ward of the Conservatives on the River Cam? I'm calling an adjournment in business of the annual meeting so that some committees can now meet in turn to make appointments of working parties and outside bodies. Will all members remain seated while special meetings take place? All members have been issued the following five special meeting agendas: civic affairs, community services, environment, licensing, strategy and resources. However, only those who have been appointed members of the committee are entitled to vote. When the committee is dealing with its appointments, would only the members of that committee please stand in order to make voting clear? Would executive councillors who are being asked to agree appointments also please stand? I will bring up members' names on each committee and will ask that all members only stand and vote if a member of the committee is absent. Okay, civic affairs committee, would the following councillors please stand? Benstead, Catra, Hart, Ferguson, Pitt and Robinson. Alternative members of councillors Bick and Logos. And I ask that you only take part and vote if a member of the committee is absent. Oh, do members agree to the appointment set out on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes the civic affairs committee. Okay. Community Services Scrutiny Committee, would the following councillors please stand? Austin, Badgett, Van Gogh, Ratcliffe, Reed, Rayner, Saris and Sedditt. Councillor O'Reilly, Johnson also please stand. Can I ask that the Labour group confirm their alternative member on the Plaid of Montesites City Central Management Committee?
I will leave the podium to the honour.
Does the scrutiny committee agree and note the appointment set out on the agenda? Do the executive councillors agree appointments are set out on the agenda?
Agreed.
That concludes the community service scrutiny committee meeting. Thank you. Okay, the environmental scrutiny committee, would the following councillors please stand? Goldrock, Pitt, Moore, Perry, Robinson, Ratcliffe, Paton-Spart, Martin-Spart. And can councillors Roberts and Blenko also please stand? Can I ask that the Labour group confirm their alternative member on the Development Plan Scrutiny Committee?
I'd say Councillor Martin Smart.
Does the scrutiny committee agree and note the appointment set out on the agenda? Does the executive councillors agree the appointment set out on the agenda?
Yes.
That concludes the environmental scrutiny committee. Okay, next one, licensing committee, would the following councillors please stand? Austin, Bick, Benstead, Goldrock? Sorry. That person, Pitts, Owers, O'Reilly, Sedditt, Sjeff. I am also a member of this committee and will be voting from the dust. Can I remind all members of the licensing committee that training on the council's licence function is scheduled for Monday, the thirtieth in June, is compulsory for all members who will determine licence applications? Do members agree the appointment of the subcommittees set out on the agenda?
Yeah.
That concludes the licensing committee meeting. Strategy and Resource Scrutiny Committee, the following councillors please stand? Bick, Benstead, Badgett, Catra, Robinson, Sedditt, Martin-Spart, Smith. And Councillor Herbert and Owers also please stand. Does the scrutiny committee agree and note the appointment set out on the agenda? Do the executive councillors agree the appointment set out on the agenda?
Yeah.
Can I conclude that the Strategy and Resource Committee? We now return to the rest of the business of the annual meeting. Generalising and Dever. We return to the annual statement under council procedure rules three point two point one fourteen. I call on Councillor Herbert to speak for no more than fifteen minutes on the Labour group's priorities to the actual objectives for the forthcoming music.
I'm properly welcomed due to today's, and I think you're a wonderful choice for us. And I hope we have a special year, because I think this is a day which will get much from the meetings and the events that you have hosted and attended. So, I hope you have a wonderful morning. I hope that I can abuse my position as leader in just one way at an early stage. And that is, I do think that as a council, we don't have an adequate process for actually saying thank you to councillors who either stood down and didn't come back to the council. And I hope that if I use a couple of minutes, Mayor, that that isn't going to be taking off my time. So, I will test that one out. I had mentioned it to the Doncots, I didn't mention it to Councillor Bick. I would welcome the new councillors on the Liberal Democrat benches, of which there are three. I'd also welcome Marion Rees-Hollingback, because it's good to see returning councillors. Richard Robertson is a returning councillor, who was previously Chair of the Finance Committee of this council. And we have six other returning councillors. But I just particularly just wanted to pay tribute to the eleven longer-term and several high-impact councillors who are not with us. Some of them may decide to return, but I'd just like to record the thanks of the council to Max Boyce, Sarah Brown, Simon Kiteley, Colin Rosenstiel, Jean Swanson, Sheila Stewart, Tim Ward and the mayor of last year, Paul Saunders, who I'm glad to see is still with us. And I'd also appreciate that Colin Rosenstiel is with us. There were other retirees, Simon Riley and Susannah Kerr. And I'd also pay tribute to Garmarch and Daisy, who I was so glad was with us this morning. And also, we remember her partner, Anne Packer. So, I just think, Mayor, that what we will do is we'll just come forward with a discussion about having some means of saying thanks to councillors. Because a number of those councillors served on the council for ten years, and a number of the more executive councillors have made a significant contribution. And yes, turning, Madam Mayor, to the business in front of us. I too would like to echo the respect that was shown by Tim Bick on behalf of his party to the staff of our council. We do have people that go well beyond natural duty and work hours that perhaps they are not being properly remunerated for. We have benefited from that in that clearly there's been some passage of time between twenty-second of May and now, but not a lot. And there's been a lot of work put in. So, in terms of our annual statements, effectively, some of the themes of our annual statements are not new. We put forward a costed budget amendment back in February. We put our policies in front of the Cambridge voters in May. And the issue now is to continue that narrative. If there is a good story to tell, or if we've got some clear proposals, then retelling them doesn't do the many part. We have a number of new policies that we will add. We've adapted policies from other uses in other councils. And several of our policies are clearly Labour, and then if you want the colour to put on them, they're red policies. But we are humble. We are here because people voted for us to deliver for them. And we are here to tackle major challenges, and we're here for Cambridge residents to make good decisions. And another colleague used a four-letter word, but I'll use the term 'get work done' is essential. Cambridge people are special. They are our neighbours, and they're the people we serve. And they're independent-minded and therefore thinking. And they're rightly demanding of their council and their councillors. We all describe Cambridge as a place with considerable magic, and it gives us joy to give joy to the people who live in it. And people, along with them, we love this city. And we love the fact that people come to it too. It is something of a magic city. And it is a uniquely charming place both to live and work. Many people move to Cambridge, including many in this chamber, and fewer leave. In world terms, it's a hundred and twenty thousand in population, but that is just a speck in terms of the overall population of the planet. Nevertheless, Cambridge is known and respected across that world. It's a place of great talent, amazing ideas, wonderful innovation, and continually challenging weak notions and worn-out thinking. So, I bring to the council a detailed proposal, which is in the pages of the annual statement, and which other executive councillors and colleagues will speak to. There are many plans in there, but those plans depend on partnerships, they depend on consultations and delivery. So, we've got seven executive councillors, four scrutiny committees, four central committees, including a subcommittee on the old important global plan. We have four area committees. And I also will bring forward proposals, which will also come to the scrutiny committees for what we call lead councillors. The power in this council is exercised through the executive councillors. The previous administration had champions. We would want to have a lead councillor for cycling, for instance, and that person will be Martin Smart. But the county council already has a champion for cycling. And champions as a term didn't actually have any defined role. So, we need to be clear in developing that. And that is part of the principle, which I'm sure will apply to the opposition party, that every councillor on this council has a role to contribute. And I hope also that in developing the ways that we deliver business, that we can also look at inexpensive ways for councillors and working groups to also discuss a number of issues before the council. So, twelve points. The first point is about the wealth creation. Our city does have huge potential. It punches above its weight with its unique international businesses and its globally-recognised research and innovation. It is always ahead, or it has been and it needs to be. It is always ahead of the next growth phase. So, we as a council will do what we can to support the wealth creators, will assist our two universities, our research companies, and we will welcome company headquarters and assist those who invest. If it involves planning, we'll obviously make sure that that planning is sensible and sustainable. So, we will develop a thriving and sustainable local economy, which builds on a city's reputation, and bridges across to countries a lot bigger than ours, of China, of India, of Brazil, Nigeria, and countries that will in the future be even more powerful than now. And in doing so, we will build a tolerance and a welcoming city, will tackle barriers and discrimination. It was a cherished value that this city voted for parties that are positive about integration with recent elections. We are a beacon, I think, in this, in the country, of us being a liberal and an open city that welcomes people and that tackles discrimination. And we're determined to continue that thread. And to do so with new ideas and energy, and build on the cultural wealth and identity that the new citizens of Cambridge bring. So, we will support prosperity, but we'll also champion one Cambridge for fair for all. So, you will hear some of the themes that are in our manifesto, and which we cut a couple of trees down to match the couple of trees that the Liberal Democrats cut down in the recent election to communicate our point. Our core targets as administration will be to share that prosperity, to ensure that everybody benefits from that growth, and to tackle inequality. There is another side to the city, of the smiling prosperous face of Cambridge. If we've got areas of the city where life expectancy is eight point seven years less for men, and ten and a half years less for women, that's a call for action. So, all parts of the city, including areas we consider were neglected by the previous administration, in the east and the north, deserve attention. The council will assist those struggling where it can. And the cornerstone tackling this tale of two cities will be the establishment of the anti-poverty strategy. You will already see in the annual statement the first-stage schemes, and those are important. Living wage has to go beyond this council, initiatives to cut energy and water bills, and the sharing prosperity fund diverting funds that are basically resulting from growth and prosperity in the city. But there will be a second and more detailed additional stage, and there will be a clarity about the purposes of both of the anti-poverty strategy and its ambulants. And we'll work with the county council, it has a huge role, voluntary groups, employers and our residents, and we'll make sure that that benefits all of the city. And I hope all forty-two councillors will contribute to that. I know it continues some of the threads of the previous administration. Some of those were our thinking, including the initiation of the council's policies on the living wage, but we have to go much further. Point three, we do face a massive housing crisis. We don't overstate what the council can achieve, that Labour will work with partners to increase both the supply of housing and particularly affordable housing for rent in and near Cambridge, and will tackle unfair charges in the private rented sector. This will not be the kind of Dan Verro Lynn plan that was the subject of one press release stating that there will be two thousand new homes. There is little point in the amount of two thousand homes if you don't know where and don't know when they're going to be built. And we will also not demolish some of the happily successful communities that were identified for redevelopment. So, as will be taken to the Housing Scrutiny Committee by Councillor Kevin Price, proposals not to proceed with the demolition of Blitzfield Road and Campkin Road. One of our lead letters, who sadly suffered stroke but is now better following the election, was not a brave or forthright individual, but he cried so strongly that he came to this chamber to make that point. On essential services, point four, Labour will massively boost efforts to clean up the city by doubling public role enforcement. We've had evidence of that in the Cambridge news yesterday. We have intentional and unnecessary damage caused by people, and that is not going to be sorted out just by the slogan of education. So, we will have measures that have been included late in the day about reversing the cut in pest and rat control, and we will be coming forward with cleaner glitzers, and I'm sure a good answer to the question on that, as well as cracking down on one of our perennial favourites of dog fouling. We may not see it in the city centre, there are not many dogs walking around the city centre, thankfully, but there are many in the residential parks of the city. But overall, education isn't working. Even if we have land posters at all levels, two-foot, six-foot, eight-foot, ten-foot, with eyes staring out at people, education by itself will not change some of this behaviour, nor will it change antisocial behaviour linked to alcohol, whether that's street drinking during the day, but particularly also in the night-time economy. So, we'll be working on licensing issues, and Councillor Benstead will be leading some of that, because that's the function of the licensing committee, working with the executive councillor. Five, funding challenge. We do face a huge financial challenge. We have a forty percent cut in ground, we have targets to achieve one point three million pound reductions next year, a further reduction of one point three million for the following year. It is the case that the council two years ago had nine million pounds in reserves and now has five million. It is the case that a number of those service reviews that were raised are still to be concluded. It was the case that 2013 was a wasted year after the two point three million pound budget era. We do not have a simple inheritance. And I know somebody wording in the Liberal Democrats annual statement about voluntary sector, but it has to be recorded that the Liberal Democrats have brought forward a proposal for reviewing and for a potentially significant cut in voluntary sector funding in the city. So, we do look keenly to see whether as opposition they behave like they would have in power, because that has been a challenge for them nationally as well. Point six, we will be following through the issues of discrimination. We will not, as a Labour councillor, as Labour councillors and as a Labour council, show any welcome to racist events that occurred in recent years in this city. We will be quite clear that we are on the side of people that are discriminated, whether that's for all of the range of issues, but that will include race and nationality. Given some of the utterances of UKIP, it will include gender, identity and sexual orientation, because some people still are feeling uncomfortable in this city. because some people still are feeling uncomfortable in this city because of overall views. And we will play our part also in sub-regional provision for travellers. Whilst we do not have a large traveller community in this city, we have people on Fen Road, which the mayor is well acquainted with, who live in sub-standard accommodation. And overall, the provision cannot just be left to South Cambridgeshire, albeit that this city has limited land. So we will work on behalf of each of the minorities or people that have suffered discrimination. We will work strongly with the university, who are a core reason for the global success of the city. So both universities have a big part to play. We will combine the strengths of Town and Gham. And we will undertake a renewed joint dialogue on projects and work in tangible ways, including on the city deal. Contrary to claims made by the Liberal Democrats in the election, congestion will be a priority. It is not in gift of a keep payments moving fund because by itself that would not in any way address the issues. And also contrary to the claims made, there is not a billion pounds in the bank already waiting to deal with this problem, as has been stated in leaflets and in other public statements. So where the Liberal Democrats talk about negativity, there is no negativity. There is a positive determination to tackle congestion. It's just that at the very moment that we start, we have a hundred million pounds committed. But we will be signing the city deal agreement next week. And we will work with all parties and some of the ideas from the independent conservative group on tackling the issues that relate to congestion. One of those will be to tackle congestion in the city centre. And we will be asking the county council to have a significant review of that. We are a cycling city. Several have cycled to the council meeting today. And we will build on the Tour de France legacy. So we will have a cycling lead. And that person will work closely with the county council. And obviously with the executive councillor for planning and transport. So we will see continuance of the initiatives on cycling. And we will expand and come up with fresh initiatives on that. But that will be part of a wider commitment to the local environment, to delivering an effective local plan that focuses on sustainable development, on minimising the development in the green belt, on effective settlements if agreed by our neighbours because we're not in a position to determine planning in South Cambridgeshire. But joint work with South Cambridgeshire. We will lead on climate change. We will come forward with initiatives. And we'll work with transition Cambridge and some very effective groups. On planning, we will bring forward proposals on planning coming from area committees to central committees. We put that forward in the election. We got asked occasionally about it. It was featured hugely in several Liberal Democrat leaflets. Many people came up to us and asked what is all this about? Planning decisions have to be taken well. And we will also be addressing the issue where the planning committee has in the past reversed offers of recommendations and having a process to look at that. We'll work with partners. We'll be engaging, out facing. We will further that unitary agenda. I don't foresee the abolition of Cambridge City Council for a while, council leader. Much as we would like to rate a Cambridge council, it's not on the agenda... What is on the agenda is virtual unitary and teamwork. So I've already had a good meeting with the leader of South Cambridge Council. We have different views on some issues. But I would say about eighty percent of what really matters, there is a common shared agenda between South Cambridgeshire and the city. So if we have a number one partner, we would aim for it to be them and hope that they will come with us on a whole range of issues. And we will listen to what they've got to say. We'll support the bid, Business Improvement District. We work with the Chamber of Commerce and with a range of other groups. And obviously, we work with the community sector. Point twelve, we will ensure residents, our real bosses, are consulted and properly engaged in the city's future. As several people were sore feet and know that we did call on 15,000 residents between January and May. And in the process, we had a lot of conversations. And we will continue that. And obviously, there is a strong thread of consultation by the council. Madam Mayor, we're a city of huge talents and hidden opportunities to unlock. We're not a coordinated city, but we have a huge financial challenge, given the 40% cut by the coalition. Given the targets that we have to achieve in year-on-year spending. We're not going to be an administration resting on its laurels. And we're not waiting for serendipity or events to come good. We have executive councillors and councillors that will tackle issues, as I'm sure more councillors across the city will tackle issues. And we just need to deal with the issues and move on. There is so much progress to be made. We have a newly elected team. And we'll make sure that Cambridge's huge potential and its potential to be a more equal city is unlocked. We will govern Cambridge for all its residents. And we'll ensure that the council supports those who need us the most. To restate our phrase, which we will use again, one Cambridge and we want it to be fair for all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I now call on councillor Ripbiton for the Liberal Democrat, who will have fifteen minutes to speak on the groups and your statement. This will include playing against eighty-five to ninety-six on your general plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to endorse the sentiments that councillor Herbert set out at the beginning of his speech, in recognition of those councillors who restand or restored and failed in their reelection. And also to welcome those new councillors on the sides of the chamber. From looking at the Labour and the Liberal Democrat status today, it's immediately obvious that the parties of this council share very many objectives of Cambridge. Where business is brought forward in that vein, we on this side look forward to working together on it. We all know that Cambridge has become a phenomenally successful city. And we feel we have done a lot to assist and enable that process. We all know that this success brings challenges. That these challenges constitute the agenda of this council, whichever party is running. And that many of those challenges are long-term. Neither invented only yesterday, nor solved tomorrow, much that we would wish to be otherwise. We believe that we have set the council on a good course in tackling many of these challenges. And we will look for this new administration not to drop the ball. Not to drop the ball in defending the local plan, carefully coordinated as it was with neighbouring councils. It secures a critical balance between much-needed extra housing and safeguarding the character and setting of this city. A critical concern for very many people and organisations thinking of the future. Yet you have been strangely silent on this, even now. Nothing in your annual statement. Failure to support the passage of the plan through this chamber earlier this year, despite many years of collaborative working nights. This is still only a draft plan. And many people are worried that you aren't committed to it. But all equally mustn't be dropped on this problem that councillor Herbert refers to congestion and the city deal. But we on this side have pioneered for Cambridge, they are tackled. No one would encourage on this score by your deputy leader's analysis that congestion, well, I've just met a few people who like for work. The way you've diminished this city deal over recent months shows a failure of vision and of understanding what is now in play. Not only a huge amount of funding for investment in the problem, the problem that holds our economy back and holds housing back. But also a governance for it, which enables strategic decision-making across the organisational divide within Greater Cambridge. And it gives this council a share for the first time in decisions on transport infrastructure. But at the same time as this, the city deal is the place where we have made and secured commitments to explore new approaches to funding of affordable intermediate housing from partner councillors and from universities. And it's the place where we have won the power to redirect vocational training to get local youngsters hooked up to the big skill needs in the booming technology companies. It's vital that the new administration wakes up to what the outgoing administration is needing for you. Another one that is important not to drop the ball on is the financial direction that we have set. Ensuring funds are available to support the council's services as government slowly steadily diminishes its grasp. All of our initiatives, I would say, are beautifully transcribed into your statement today, which is excellent. But the proof of the pudding is in the eating. In particular, to take the tough decisions that that strategy really applies. For the moment, for us, the jury is out. Worriedly, your own budget amendment in February failed to get financial endorsement from the Section 151 question. You have now raised expectations very high in areas that were already priorities for this council. It seems you have hardly been able to see any problem to which you think employing an extra council officer isn't the solution. You are putting a lot of pressure on the council finances, which were hardly constrained before. We will be watching how this unfolds and bringing forward alternatives when needed. So these are three key areas where we will be scrutinising you carefully to see you don't squander what you are taking from us at the legacy. But there are other areas where we're worried and where you bring matters fractal decision-making at future meetings. We do expect to be challenging you. We share your aversion for poverty, whether it's in this city or anywhere else. But we do have questions about the realistic powers that this council has that can genuinely take people out of poverty. The key strategic contributions that we can make against poverty are through housing and planning on one hand, and now transport on the other. Both underpinning a healthy local economy and pursuing balance between supply and demand in housing. The council also differentiates strongly already across the city in its own services to target support towards disadvantaged and hard-earned. But we've got doubts about this battery and anti-poverty project you are proposing. They certainly sound real un-equal. But I want to take councillor Herbert at his word when he said this week, people won't judge us on our ambition. They will judge us on whether they see real progress. We will be taking this right up. What is the definition of poverty that you are targeting? How many people will you be lifting out of it in year one, two, three and four? And how will that last longer than your projects, many of which are temporary? It may well be that these projects are worth investing in. And if so, we'll support them. But if with the expected outcomes declared it isn't, the people in poverty in Cambridge may benefit more in the longer term if the money and office of time were spent on other things which improve the economy and importantly, give your people ancestors the durable way of solving poverty. Just like that tendency to see no problem to which a new officer boasts isn't the answer. There is also that unsettling tendency to see few problems to which more enforcement isn't the solution. So the public themselves are the problem. You seem almost intoxicated with the idea. We see a childlike desire to count the effectiveness of cleanliness or public behaviour in the number of people who get penalised for transgressions, as if that was the end product itself. As if information, education and warnings are of no worth at all. No, someone must suffer. We will be seeking to measure the true end products and asking what type of change in them can be achieved and how much, because enforcement is expensive. We will be inviting you to put into the balance a value for a relaxed, friendly, tolerant environment that this city enjoys for the overwhelming majority of residents experience. We will be calling on you to resist your own temptation to turn this into a Aussie council. Madam Mayor, we're also worried about your dismantling the decentralisation adopence that we have introduced to this city. We have many times rehearsed your proposals to take planning decisions out of the hands of councillors who know their area. You can certainly expect more argument on that from this side. We now know, though, that it's apparently going to be okay for residents to watch other councillors do it on the telly instead. We don't accept that either. But now, we've also read a broader vision to the area committees, which appears to treat them as mere sounding boards for decisions to be taken by others elsewhere. The purpose of the area committees was to take decision-making to communities, to give them a voice and an involvement, not to create talking shop uppers from real decision-making. Your ideas seem to us to be entirely retrograde on this approach. And you will not be getting much support from us for it. We can say, Madam Mayor, we can't say we'll be supporting your statement in the vote today. It's good and bad in it. But we do hear it. And when real business and decision-making on your plans begins, we will see. Neither will we be pushing our own statement to a vote, which for us is a statement of our own intent as an opposition. We accept the results of the election on May the 22nd. But now, instead of you challenging us, instead of you challenging us on our plans and decisions, it's now to be us challenging you on yours. This is a very serious part of the democratic process and firmly improve outcomes for the public. We're leaving you, we feel, with some important achievements, some plans and directions. But we think of frankly yours to mess up. And we will try to make sure you don't. You will be bringing some proposals which we don't think have been thought through. And we will be trying to persuade you to do so. But our duty is our duty to the people who are lucky that's here. And we have intended to discharge that as effectively as we are able. Having said this, to return to the point, where we can, we will work together constructively in the interests of the city.
Thank you, councillor Ripbiton. Okay, I now call on councillor Hipkin for the Independent Conservative Group, who will have fifteen minutes to speak on the Independent Conservative Groups and also... This was included separately with your agendas and copies are available on page twenty-one to twenty-two of the council information plan.
Madam Mayor, my first congratulations on your appointment. They were going to give a real lift, this council. They've waited a long time for it. They have worked very, very hard to achieve it. Their vision for the city is a purely admirable and honourable one. And we wish them every success in their endeavours to make that vision a reality. May I also welcome an addition to our side, to our group, in the shape of Mary Louise Holden, who by her very presence has increased the size... Holden, who by her very presence has increased the size of this group by fifty-seven, which is the greatest increase in representation in this town.
Two per cent of the overall council.
Oh, have me. Well, you've had, you've had a copy of the annual statement for this small group, and I would like to organise my remarks in terms of one or two major themes. The first is the reform of governance. I'm happy to hear, as I hear both in the city and in the county, that more and more of us, that is local politicians, are persuaded of the merits and the need for the unitary authority for Cambridge and the sub-region. If you need any example of how that failure to leave a unitary authority has an adverse impact on the city, consider, if you will, the question of where the new secondary school in the east of the city is to be located. There is no question that as we all energetically endorse the growth agenda, we are by implication endorsing the growth in child numbers, and again by implication in the need for the proper provision of schooling. And it is a sad reflection on the present state of affairs that we are still some distance from achieving a sensible understanding of where that new secondary school is to be We are shortly also going to have to undertake on the county a reform of the ward boundaries, and I think I can say without dispersing any confidential information that there is a strong likelihood that the number of city wards or city divisions, as we're talking about the county, will be reduced. And in order to avoid confusion among residents, I think it would make great deal of sense if all boundaries were similarly drawn co-turbinally with those of the county, and that would involve a reduction in the number of councillors, and that would be no bad thing, especially if one were able to choose who might be the loser. Another theme with respect to governance is that of area committees. I think the Labour proposal to simply take away the planning function from them will leave them even more emaciated and useless. Area committees have failed because they have failed to achieve their objective. Their objective was growing their community in power. I have to say to you, that just has not happened. And we are lucky if we get twelve members of the public, genuinely members of the public, who are not interested in planning applications, those who are will come and go as quickly as their matters are done. But those who come because they want to discuss local issues are accountable almost on two hands, and they're regulars, they're prototype politicians, they're community politicians, they're elected members of their residents' associations, so, well, it's obvious. But don't tell me that's community engagement. It is, and if you take away the planning functions, then what you will be left with is this run of area committees, underrepresented, failing to engage with the community, and what is more important, being extremely expensive. You know, we have had and calculated by our own officers that under the present attendance figures, each attendee for each meeting, attendee for each meeting, costs a cash between sixty and seventy pounds. You know, that's a subsidy we cannot afford. Now, either you do something serious about community engagement and really boost up the number by bringing to the people opportunities to discuss issues of burning concern to them, or you scrap them, frankly, that is the choice. Another important theme will be generating revenue for this council. You know, the county has got to find savings of a hundred and fifty millions over the next five years, that's thirty million in years got slashed from its budgets. We face, if not exactly similar challenges, they're pretty severe. All councils face financial hardship. All councils have got to be thinking positively about how they reduce their services or generate income. And I think, you know, one of the problems about being in this paralytic state of worrying about cuts to services is that we're not giving enough intelligent attention to how we can generate income for our communities. So we will be pressing for much faster action on the conversion of Park Street Car Park, on getting the Bill Road depot used for housing development, and on using more of the Guild Hall for useful commercial purposes. You know, when you consider that large parts of the lower ground floor of the Guild Hall are now being used very successfully by retailing cafes, restaurants and so on, you know, when Pastor Reed and I many, many years ago stood outside the Guild Hall and, and thought about all of these possibilities, it's wonderful to see that they've been realised. Well, let's continue the process. Uh, you know, maybe in a few years' time, this room in which we sit five times a year might be one of the flashiest restaurants in Cambridge. I, I certainly would, would welcome that you'd come here frequently. Let me to remember the, the old days. I also, I also feel that on things like car parking fees, we've got to stop apologising. We've got to stop apologising to the motorists that parking fees are rising. You know, we have a strategy of trying to keep cars out of the city centre, yet we have these massive car parks, and everybody knows that they generate a great deal of our income, but it really is indefensible for us to go on trying to apologise for the fact that this is a major source of income generation for the city, we should exploit it. Let's not be afraid to say we're going to increase car parking charges and we're going to perhaps increase them above inflation, and, uh, you know, so be it. And, you know, if you disturb, I shall lose my track. Sorry, I've got a domestic side. Be three mispronouncing. The third major issue is that of coping with Cambridge's traffic problems. And I think here, again, we have to be pretty radical. The county's transport plan does envisage a major demand management scheme, which I thoroughly and I completely thoroughly support, and that involves the rolling out across the city of whole districts and areas of restricted parking, of resident parking schemes. I'm afraid we have to make the city more and more inhospitable to the motorists. We should not be setting out measures to attract motorists into Cambridge, but to deter them, so that they have to use park and ride, or they have to use alternative forms of transport to get into the city, or they have to share transport in order to get into the city. So let's make the car parks much, much more expensive than they are, and let's roll out demand measures that will be relatively inexpensive to implement, but would have a radical effect upon levels of traffic coming into the city. I also feel that we've got to stop being over-hospitable to tourist coaches. The idea that one of the loveliest streets in Cambridge, the backs, should be a free parking zone, for continental and other buses to come into the city, seems to be too crazy, especially as what they bring into the city are precisely the kind of tourists who doesn't really generate anything important for the local economy. So I think we've got to say tourist buses should terminate at the park and ride sites, and they should get on a bus coming into the city in the normal way and pay their normal fee, and if that puts some of those coach parties off, well, maybe that would ease some of the pressure on the city centre, some of the footfall on the city centre, which is already making it in many ways a very undesirable place to be. I also feel that we need a long-term strategy, this couldn't happen over time, and stagecoach if they get any wind of this suggestion will have some sort of heart attack, but...
But he would give it to him.
What I can believe is that heavy buses coming into the city is also a problem, particularly down narrow streets like Morton Street when they enter into the city centre. So I think we should be thinking in terms of a number of exchange points close to the city, but well outside the city centre, where heavy buses translate their passengers and onto smaller eco-friendly vehicles, and that those are current, running all the time, perhaps for your charges there, as that little minibus used to be when it was running around the city, but we've got to find ways in which we can reduce, reduce the volumes of heavy traffic, including buses coming into the city. Finally, I'd like to welcome the appointment of Corina O'Reilly as the executive councillor responsible for the city centre. And I think the fact that the deputy leader of the Labour group has been appointed for that task is a hopeful measure of their concern about the state of the city centre and the future of the city centre. I love the market, and I think many people would regard the market as one of the most characteristic features of the city world, but it is looking dilapidated, it is looking tired, it needs refurbishment, and particularly it needs to get rid of that horrid recycling bunker which is parked next to the bread store. Um, and we really need to make the market a more attractive place both by day and by night, and maybe detachable and removable stalls might be the beginning of a comprehensive policy in that respect, and if Corina O'Reilly and her allies are minded to tackle that problem, they will find huge support from this group. I also think that the city centre is suffering from the requisition of public space by commercial interests. Now, you may, you know, you may say, 'Oh, aren't all the cafes and the restaurants that they make City Lovely in Life?' Well, they may do that, but I am watching day after day, people, madam with your disability and others, you know, people I recognise as regular citizens of this, they're not visiting for the day and buying a few cheap foils on, on, on the city market, they are, they live here, they live here, and they cannot move around the city freely and agreeably. They find themselves increasingly having to walk around chairs, having to say excuse me to waiters who use the footpath as a station for their delivery of their, of their meals. You know, this is wrong, and we've got to do something about it. And similarly, the number of A-boards which now scatter our footpaths are a further impediment to the, 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 the normal use that pedestrians are entitled to. Let me finish by saying this, this council faces a difficult future, and why these ladies and gentlemen worked so hard to be elected, given the circumstances that they know would exist over the next few years, can only be understood as an act of terrorism. This is going to be a terribly difficult time for all of us. I notice the measured, courteous, conciliatory fashion in which councillor Herbert introduces annual statements. I notice similarly the spiteful, recriminatory, confrontational way in which the Lib Dems are deciding that they're going to position themselves with respect to you. When these two different attitudes come through in the daily exchange on committees and so on, so long as you maintain that attitude of conciliation and cooperation, you will find cooperation from us, and so long as you continue with the approach adopted by councillor Dick, you will find yourselves alone.
Okay, we now turn to the adoption of the annual policies and priorities. Under the council procedure, Rule 3.2.1.14, the annual statement of the Labour group will be treated as a motion for adoption, which has been deemed to be moved and seconded. The debate on the statement and any amendments will be followed by a vote on the motion. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's so really great to see you in that position, and I think that we'd like to have our congratulations and thanks, and I think that you make a tremendous and a very good spirit in your energy and your appetite for, for, for hard work. And I also want to also welcome back councillor Driving. I was amused to hear about the support that Bob, who wore Jerry, has in his experience. Usually it's us supporting Bob, um, this, that, that was one of too, too, too many jokes, but I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job in that role. Now, kind of an honest tip for the councillors, certainly on that way, I think I'll just want to say councillor Dick. I'm scared of red hotness. I noticed from the fact that he seems to be inviting, he might push the annual statement to a debate, that you want to avoid scrutiny of the annual statement, because it won't be properly debated and you might, might move it to amendment, I'm assuming, unless you actually man up and, and, and will actually do it, because then it's going to be subject to proper scrutiny. In his remarks councillor Hickin described the market as dilapidated and tired, which is a bit like the dead benches of the Labour Party, and that was in Hickey that we received, rightly so, in May. You would think that having received such a drubbing from the electorate, you probably wouldn't just re-trink the manifesto as your annual statement, because it's been clearly comprehensively rejected by the people in Cambridge. The, the Lib Dem group reminds me a little bit of HS Titanic, you hit the iceberg, band's still playing on, you're going down fairly quickly, and the captain should probably take you, you'd get on a lifeboat as well, when you're on the Atlantic. Just to address a few of the points, now the first lie in councillor Dick's speech, we have a lie, we expect a standard number of lies in the different communication, and it would be verbal or written, and we got it straight away by the implication that the Section 25 report on the Labour budget amendment in opposition said that our budget amendment was in some way unacceptable. I quote, as I have it here, this budget amendment, the Labour budget amendment, would not require any substantive changes to the existing amendments in Section 25 report. The amendment has no impact on its aims to provide a forecast period and does not propose any changes to the level of reserves. The only slight reservation was on our proposal in terms of the period renewal funds, but it said at the end, in promoting the amendment, it is recognised that there may be deemed to sell assets at a point in future to meet the own expenditure requirements, and therefore, as the vendor of the sources said, when it was in committee, it really has almost no impact on the overall financial viability of our budget at all.
It was a draw.
I thought it was a draw, but we don't know if it, the Lib Dems don't, the Lib Dems don't draw willingly. So to move on to some of the comments on the city deal, just briefly, and before I have a quick overview of our financial situation, it really astonishes me, the Liberal Democrats seem to think that they've got like a magic bowl of porridge essentially, which the porridge will keep coming, there's an infinite supply of money coming from the city hall, so I'm walking with the city problems, and we have lie after lie in the election about one billion pounds in the city deal. One billion, even if we've got all of the money, all the charges, and we met all of the conditions, seventy-five hundred million, and, and, and we have guaranteed, it's a hundred million pounds. There's a difference between being ridiculously Polly-Aldridge and over-optimistic about something and being realist. Of course we want to use the city deal money in the right way, and of course we welcome it, it's the only deal on the table and improvement in terms of addressing our infrastructure gap, but to suggest that it somehow answers all of our problems and that by expressing any doubt about it, we are in some way neglecting our duty is just frankly ridiculous. Now, just to move on quickly with the time I've left, on, on, in terms of our financial, enormous financial challenge that, that, that has already been observed by councillor Herbert and others, councillor faces, and as usual, you know, we've heard a lot about the supposed wonderful legacy being left with by the Liberal Democrat, that would be the legacy of Julian Huppert voting for all the cuts to that Paul Rudd.
Yeah.
The 34% overall since 2010 to our Paul Brown, which will briefly over 40% by the time for the next budget. Well done from the Labour Party, thank you very much for that. And indeed, we are even reaching a situation where the revenue support run, which is one of the main elements of our Paul Brown thing, will actually be reduced to zero by 2020 on our carbon reduction, which shows you some of the reason for support for the Labour Party as a local government. So we've heard about the savings target of £1.3 million pounds this year, another one for a few years, and I'll talk about in the following year. This is a challenge, no one doubts this is a challenge, but we will provide a sense of provenance and a sense of responsibility, but we're also a sense of facing up to the challenges of some of the priorities and the social priorities that underlie our annual statement and our agenda to deliver for the poorest people in this city. I like to quote Antonio Gavsky in the Italian Marxist. What we need is pessimism of the intellect, the optimism of the will, and believing on this side we have optimism of the will, rather than carking a negativity on your side, because you're a stall loser, essentially. The real legacy, the real legacy of the Liberal Democrat administration is actually a complete failure to address some of the underlying financial issues that this council has faced for years. First of all, and with three major priorities I will have, in terms of bringing out three problems that are addressed in some detail here, about how we will address our financial strategy in the years to come, in my role as the councillor to provide actual resources. The first of all is taking a good hard look at our commercial property portfolio, which the years was left in the state of effectively drift by the fact we didn't have for a long time a full-time head of property. Now we do, and I will give some credit, there was a small recognition in the last budget by the Liberal Democrats of the need to enhance and access to use those, that one of the commercial property portfolio would be packed, actually which was bought by Labour councillors in the eighties, which is former councillor Robertson, when he was there, and councillor Paul Brown, which is the legacy of a previous Labour administration. And in the later days of the administration, there was some more money in the commercial property acquisition. There's two problems with that. First of all, the money was started from retained business rates, and given the levels of appeals and valuations, I think that we shouldn't be over-optimistic necessarily that those figures will start up in the future, although we will have to see an immediate financial strategy. And the second problem is, £1.1 million, which was the amount of two years that were set aside, is in terms of acquiring a high-quality, high-yield commercial property asset, which is simply not enough. So part of our strategy will be to examine how we can prepare us for funding, maybe from earmark reserves or by regaining our treasury management strategy, in order to look at a more substantial acquisition of commercial property, so we can invest in the future of Cambridge and we can get back to term and protect the central services. The second bit of it is also the issue of treasury management, which is not the most sexy thing that this council does. But it's important that the cash reserves we have in this council are invested properly in order to balance liquidity and security against yield, which I think what we've had recently is an overreaction, right, in favour of caution. And we will conduct a review of the treasury management strategy in order to look to see if there are longer-term, high-yield investments that we can have, perhaps with something like CCLA, who are a socially responsible investment outfit, who already invest lots of money in church and charities. And thirdly, the main priority will be examining, doing a real risk-based review of the many, many complicated pots of earmark reserves and funds that this council has inherited. Now, there's nothing wrong with that, having set aside lots of money for certain uses, priorities in the future, that's a sensible approach, but I think that we've had proliferation of complexity, and we've actually not properly looked for resources in there. We're over £10 million pounds, for example, repairing the renewal fund and with all kinds of cash flowing to the square. We need to really do a proper review to see if those resources can be made to work harder for this city's people, because we have the responsibility to get the best yield we can whilst retaining responsibility and security for our people. Just lastly, in order to make our ambitious annual savings target, we will also need to consider continuing some of the organisational changes, share service projects, but even with things in the pipeline at the moment, we're looking at roughly things in the pipeline around about £700,000 out of £1.3 million, which is looking likely ready. So we've got a mountain to die on for that, and it won't be easy. So our agenda from now until the full budget will be some changes to introduce a fully costed and financially responsible budget amendment, as the director of resources said at the time, bring that forward in July to those changes, which look like they can implement very similarly to the work we did in opposition. Then we will bring together all of these themes into our mid-year financial review, in order to review some of our assumptions, working in conjunction with the new finance who will be starting a somewhat challenging job in July, and building into the next budget round, which where we will be scrutinising on the basis of social worth of all elements of council expenditure, to make sure that we really are targeting our resources at the corest, and funding a proper anti-poverty strategy, which actually shows some concern that even the city was struggling, rather than that blase, nonchalant, completely unacceptable attitude of councillor Dick, who seems to think that the business doesn't happen where he lives, it's not a problem. And just finally, I'd say that this programme to fund some of the things in our annual statement and the other financial strategy will, as I said, provide provenance and responsibility to really make sure we can deliver on our socialist agenda of Cambridge.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. Right, at the moment on my list I have councillor O'Reilly, Drive and Saris, Rayner and Pitts. How might I just send them on? Okay, good. Good morning, councillors, they only have five minutes to debate, although I shall be here until tomorrow. Okay, the next one I have on my list is councillor O'Reilly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations, you not helping today. I'd also like to say thank you to councillor Higgin for his very kind words regarding the portfolio for the city centre and public places. I actually agree with him on many points in May, particularly with regard to the market and accessibility, and I hope to have something more substantial to talk to you about and to talk to members about fairly soon. I would like to thank his forbearance on one issue, though. I had intended to be as magnanimous as humanly possible in this short statement, until councillor Pitts come in, which rather put me off. I have to say, I did find I tried to derange, Madam Mayor. And I will also try to be a little bit more brief than councillor O'Callaghan. So the city centre and public places portfolio, it is a little bit different from some of the other executive portfolios, and I'm sure my predecessor will acknowledge, it's often not actually about places at all, but it's the way people use those places. And I am happy seeing that, and I'm going to say that a lot of it is actually in quite the shape, but there are issues that we need to pick up. There are areas where it really isn't in all that good shape. And these are areas, to be honest, that's come out for a number of reasons. Some of it is persistent refusal, or perhaps the opposite, to enforce the council's own rules, which leads to a situation where a small minority of people, and generally it is a small minority, so we're not talking about being bossing to the entire city, we're talking about enforcing rules for a small minority, who can trash our public spaces without repercussions. And there's areas where projects that residents need have been delayed for weeks, for months, and even in some cases for years, without any clear reasons or timetables, being given to residents to explain those delays. Now, some of this has been happened simply through a lack of resource, and that's actually going to be quite difficult to address in the current financial climate, and with this Liberal Democrat conservative government's persistent attacks on local government. Elsewhere, in fairness, it's arisen through a genuine and heartfelt desire to allow everyone to have their say, and that is the essence of politics, especially in a place like Cambridge, is competing conception to the common good, and in the case of this portfolio, what's good for the commons, and that's how it should be. Other councils actually fall over themselves to try and get public engagement in the way that the open spaces are run. And we are, although it doesn't always feel like it, very, very lucky to have the levels of interest and affection that the people of Cambridge have for their open and for their public spaces. So in my position as executive councillor, I will listen to residents and friends groups and to local councillors of all parties, to try to make sure that we do what's right for our open spaces and for the residents who use those open spaces. But there is a balance to be struck, and that balance is between making sure that people have their say and making sure that things get done, and that's where this council's direction will change. There are festering issues, Madam Mayor, that have never been resolved, and in the case of the illegal moorings on Riverside, just to pull something out of the air, that's for eight and a half years. This council will resolve the issue of illegal moorings on Riverside, and I can't give members a set timetable for that today, but we will have a timetable for residents so that they know what to expect and when to expect it. We will manage our commons and our open spaces in a way that reflects people, the way people use those open spaces, and put that as a priority. We will, and again, to pull out an example, finally get Jesus Green footpath resurfaced so that residents north of Chesterton Road can cycle to the Barack and Centre or the Station or South without their teeth rattling out of their head. We will appoint Chesterston Coordinator to support small businesses, independent traders and residents to help residents to protect and cherish their neighbours, which is just as valuable to them as Mill Road is to its residents and neighbours and shopkeepers, or the Munib is to its residents and neighbours and shopkeepers. As councillor Roberts, as memory said in the past, where there is litter, we will bring bins. I would add, where fences are needed, we will bring fences, and where they are not, we will pull them down. Where there's delay, where there's confusion, we will bring action and we will bring movement, Madam Mayor. We will get things done, Madam Mayor. For the first time in many years, we'll get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Reilly. Okay, can I ask councillor Groton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the reasons I started speaking here is I could appreciate you congratulating on being mayor. But why I am on my feet, I have a very couple of small points. It's said the previous legislature left us financially in good stead and pretty comfortable. Well, I think you could have left us even better if you had lost the past sums of money to ice cream bag and phone festival tickets. And also, just one thing about the area committees. You've got to give us a chance to see how we're going to improve, and you've stated, councillor Higgin, that we don't get a lot of people there, and we've said that for quite a number of years, and I don't think by taking the planning up it would make that much difference, it might make it better if we can replace it with other things that would be more interesting to the residents of the area. So give us a chance on the area committees. And I've got just to remind you that you did actually vote for the Liberal Democrats when you were a Liberal Democrat, so it's part of your vote.
Councillor Price.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Add my congratulations to the ever-growing list of congratulations to you on finally getting to become the mayor of Cambridge. I already knew you'd do a fantastic job. I just think now that other people are going to find that out. Good on you. Business. Earlier this week, the council approved the formation of a new housing scrutiny committee. This committee will bring together all the different strands of the whole housing portfolio under one single committee, a committee that can deal with all housing-related issues in one meeting without duplicating officer time, councillor time, and indeed tenant rep time. Our Labour administration is clear that this change will present the best opportunity for a cohesive and thorough overview, analysis and scrutiny of what is arguably the biggest challenge Cambridge faces, the need to ensure that homes in Cambridge are available for all those who want to live or work or raise their family here, regardless of income or tenure. But let me make it clear: Labour is proud to be a council landlord, and we will ensure that our tenants can be proud of their homes and their estates. The same tenants are under seemingly relentless attack from the Tories and Liberal Democrats like Julian Huppert in Westminster since 2010, where they form the front of clubs and absurd policies like the Bed of Tanks, whilst the Liberal Democrats in Cambridge continue to churn out the same tired old budgets and plans year after year. We all saw the result and heard it again and again from tenants on the doorstep as the estate infrastructure crawled around them. We will put a good deal for our tenants at the heart of how we manage our council homes. We'll start by doubling the fencing budget. To deal with a long, exactive problem of fencing our city homes' open spaces, we will conduct a full review of the housing revenue account and our asset management plan, and put into place a city homes' estate improvement programme to tackle problems like broken pavements. And we will build for the future as well, as well as looking after the present tenants, which those challenges indeed great. Counter stock numbers have declined year on year, and in the last 12 months, the average waiting time for a council home almost doubled. Under this coalition government, homelessness and roughly leaving have increased year on year as well. We will build new homes, but not at the expense of the communities they are supposed to serve. And we will build new homes, and not at the expense of selling off irreplaceable and valuable council land. That is why we will not be going ahead with the Liberal Democrat plans for Litchfield Road and road and phase two of Campkin Road. So those tenants, unlike the tenants of Water Lane and Calder Road moved on by the Liberal Democrats, can rest secure in their homes and communities. We will be looking at new partnerships and opportunities within and beyond the city boundaries to deliver new social housing, and at rents that the tenants can afford, actually afford, limiting them wherever possible to be 60% of market-level rents. And this council will work for a fairer rental, private rental sector for the many, often young residents who rent in Cambridge's overheated market. We will look at setting up a social letting agency to help landlords and tenants in the intermediate private rental market. We will raise standards by tackling road landlords and working with good landlords for our accreditation scheme. And we will review policies on HMOs, which play an important role in Cambridge to ensure that they are well-managed, good quality accommodation for the lowest living rate. Madam Mayor, under Labour, this council will put housing and tenants at the heart of what we do, and I commend our annual statement to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Price. Can I have councillor Saris, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to congratulate those ready expressed, to you and your appointment to the office of mayor. It's been a great privilege to work with you and Harvey Abbott in Chesterton, where we now have the first four compliments of Labour City councillors of a generation, and without your leadership and local activism, that would be impossible. The people of East Chesterton, Madam Mayor, will be much heartened and cheered by your appointment. In particular, they'll also be cheered by this administration's commitment to them. As councillor O'Reilly has already mentioned, we are committed to creating the post of Chesterston Coordinator to help the shops and businesses cope with the new challenges posed by the station, surmount the difficulties and build stronger communities. That commitment epitomises our vision on the Labour side to both share prosperity and build stronger communities. It epitomises what we plan to do for the city as a whole. So I am much cheered by the statement, just as I was rather depressed by councillor Pitts' response to it. Councillor Pitts is a man of enormous integrity and ability, but there he was, rehashing the same old Liberal claim to the election literature, rehashing the old claims about congestion, about the local pack, claims that have been refuted on the streets and refuted in the ballot box. Madam Mayor, I don't see my colleagues on the Labour benches dropping any balls. We've got the ball in the back of the net on the 27th, Madam Mayor. Come to the biggest promise constructive opposition, and I hope that would be fourth power, because so far, all we've had is an attempt to refight an election campaign that is over. Madam Mayor, as you know, we know each other quite well, you know I'm an animal lover, and there's nothing more depressing for an animal lover than having to observe a laid duck clogging a dead pit.
Thank you, councillor Saris. And councillor Rayner, please.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor. I was quite touched to hear the speech, so I'm looking forward to it. I'd also say best wishes to Corina, the portfolio that I really, really enjoyed making on this year, despite and partly because of many challenges. There's one point in the annual statement that I wanted to pull out and discuss a little bit. It's on page 79, the proposal that introduces targeted public spaces protection orders. And it says that these police powers confiscate alcohol where judged necessary. And I think the first crucial excuse that I'd red flag is raised with that sentence because I think it begs the question, well, who makes that judgment? So I think for my part, certainly I'll be looking really at the detail of this, who exactly will be making these judgments, how it's applied. I did take the liberty of looking at the notes to the legislation, and there are a few things that concern me there as well. Each of these orders does constitute criminal offence. So when we're talking about producing these orders, we're talking about criminalisation of behaviour in urban places. That's something that certainly we'll want to watch closely. The other thing that the notes mention are distinguishing these orders from previous legislation. They mention three things, and I take two items out of the three, worrying me. The first point is that the notes that these orders can use to prohibit even wider range of behaviour than previously. So again, we'll be looking really closely at what range of behaviour you're seeking to pay over there. And then the last item, and I'll quote from the notes here, says there will be lighter touch consultation requirements to save costs. That in itself is also worrying. I do note in the annual statement that you said specifically that this will be such a consultation. I hope you'll use your judgment and where it's merited, think about perhaps requiring a high level of consultation than just the minimum that's required for legislation. I think that's what the comment is.
Councillor Souths.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, may I say? It's not working.
Forty years and I'm still not.
Hello. Madam Mayor, I can't express what a pleasure it is to say, Madam Mayor, rather than Mr Mayor. Congratulations. Okay, so according to a study published last week, Cambridge and Oxford are the most altruistic cities in the country. What Labour's election victory tells us is that Cambridge people are also compassionate. The outgoing administration believes that Cambridge is a city at ease with itself. Cambridge people overwhelmingly rejected such smug complacency and returned Labour to office on its platform of one city, fair for all. Cambridge people care about deprivation. They care about unfairness. They care about the tenure disparity in longevity between the poorest and the most prosperous parts of the city. They care that the most disadvantaged and the most vulnerable of Cambridge citizens have been hit again and again by coalition government's austerity measures. And I know it here, here, from many people across the other side of the chamber, which begs the question, why did you not act when you had the opportunity? Labour pledged to tackle the inequalities that scar our cities, and Cambridge people resoundingly endorsed our aim. My personal victory in Petersfield is further demonstration of that compassion. Petersfield residents want domestic violence moved up the agenda. They want this too often ignored criminal behaviour tackled and victims supported. Domestic abuse takes place in private homes, but it is a matter for us all. Under Labour, curtains will be called aside, carpets lifted, and doors thrown open. In the face of rising incidents rates, and I see smiling faces across the room, which I think is a bit of a disgrace. In the face of rising incidents rates of domestic violence and falling reporting rates, the leader of the outgoing administration rejected a county request for work to increase reporting rates. We will act on that request. By seeking ways to supplement the excellent work of voluntary organisations in the field, we will let victims know that we are on their side. In relation to perpetrators, we will support the White Ribbon Campaign by working to obtain white ribbon status for Cambridge City Council. A Labour Cambridge City Council. Just gives me pleasure to say that. Cambridge people are altruistic and compassionate. They want a city that is fair and decent towards all its citizens. Labour will deliver. We will ensure that the city's neglected, ignored, and forgotten people are brought back into the fold. And the joy that tells us that Cambridge people also want an administration that will intervene on their behalf. Cambridge people, including Petersfield residents, want rid of the eyesore that disfigure our city: litter, discarded objects, cigarette butts, dogless, street drinking, and antisocial behaviour. Unlike the outgoing party, we are an unashamedly interventionist party, and we will regulate for the common good. Labour will ensure Cambridge is a clean, well-regulated city, a city in which no one is ignored, forgotten, or neglected. And again, I see smug smiles across the room. We want an inclusive, equitable city, a city in which all Cambridge citizens have a stamp, a city in which all Cambridge citizens can be proud. And I proudly commend our only segments.
Thank you, councillor Souths. Okay, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to join the chorus of appreciation and congratulations to you in the appointments of your position. And I know that you'll be a fantastic mayor and a certain city, and make it proud, so well done. Our policies of the Community Arts and Recreation Portfolio this new municipal year will set out how the city council can build one Cambridge and a city that is fair for all in the very challenging circumstances, where main discretionary service budgets are constrained, or where savings have been identified as needing to be made. However, in our view, even with these challenges, it is perfectly possible to spend budgets in such a way that can build further irrespective outcomes than results than are present. We will get to work in delivering our manifesto pledges that seek to address inequality and build community spirit and solidarity and improve access to financial welfare, advice, leisure, and the arts. For example, we want to help set up and facilitate the Cambridge Community Fair, where our cities which in private voluntary centre commit and find potential recruits to aid in strengthening their vital work in our communities. We will negotiate at Cambridge University and Colleges, building up access to sports facilities and playing fields for the benefit of the wider community. We believe that city residents should be entitled to share and make use of the many green spaces and places of leisure which for half the year stand idle. We will conduct a review of community centres for the aim that in all areas of the city can have access to outstanding services and provision. And we will, in the long term, investigate the potential for future capital investment to assist in delivering the same. We will assist and support the work of credit unions, who do a vital job in giving important financial advice and promote sustainable and affordable ways and means of borrowing. We want to eventually see credit unions have a shop front in the city centre, literally, so that this means of support can be more accessible and available to those who would benefit from their help. Furthermore, we want to see credit union services better integrated into existing support and advice provision from the city council and organisations such as the Citizens' Advice Bureau. We will continue to support community-led and council-supported events such as the Arctic Conference in Cambridge, the Big Weekend, and of course, the Folk Festival, which is in its 50th year. Change to service provision, organisational structures, and budgets already in the pipeline, as we take ensure may be tweaked or modified, and those changes recently completed and were commenced under the previous administration will be scrutinised to ensure that our Labour priorities are met as far as possible. So for example, even though there's a tough grant review coming up to committee in July, we will prioritise one that has an intended outcome in tackling inequality whilst also supporting our city's voluntary groups that do important and vital work in the community, such as Centre for Arts and Creative, the Cambridge Rhythm Resource Centre, and the Citizens Advice Bureau, and the Cambridge Minority Forum. Assisting with capacity building and strengthening Cambridge's voluntary centre are key priorities. We will be overseeing the formation of the Cultural Trust, whilst at the same time ensuring it delivers the best outcomes for city residents, current staff and users, to coerce the long-term future of our cultural exchange and guildwork wars, as well as our growth in the Folk Festival. It is important that the work of the Cultural Trust should not be absent of the council's core objective in ensuring outstanding cultural and arts events that continue to be available for the many, not few, in our city. We are all very proud of CHIPS, and so it is important that, following its recent restructure, which saw it reduced in size by nearly half, service delivery was properly targeted and resourced by focusing on providing activities for children in the most deprived areas of our city. It is fair that the impact of this far reaching new structure is openly and transparently recorded and scrutinised at committee, so I will make sure this happens. In addition, we will support the efforts of CHIPS to branch out commercially, so to enable the reinvestments of raised revenue into assist in funding activities here in Cambridge. We will ensure that GLL continues to deliver good progress in implementing the pledges that made us part of their awarded contract in the National Council of Leisure Services by investing in the equipment to refurbishing facilities, better end-of-time promotional health and fitness activities, ensuring that accessibility for services remains a core priority and that staff are eventually able to receive a living wage. The city council will continue with its preparations for the tour of France on the 7th of July that are well advanced and that are in final stages of planning. Cambridge will be ready for what will be one of the largest events ever organised in this city. In addition, the Big Weekend, part of our successful Summer in the City series of events big and small, which begins the 4th and 7th of July, promises to be a fantastic occasion as the city comes together to celebrate the passing of the world's largest sporting event. We will see too that there is a legacy spread far and wide which further enhances the city's reputation as the nation's type and capital. The summer, I tried to make clear that in this statement, that in this municipal year, there will be a very difficult time to walk in a tune and a balance between promoting social inclusion by enhancing the city's cultural offer and strengthening our community development programmes on one hand, and being financially prudent and sensible on the other. Yet because of our Labour values and our priorities for the greats, good, and for the many, not the few, I am confident that we can succeed in delivering fairness and tackling inequality in this city with less than what the previous administration had to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Perry, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations to you on taking up office as a woman Mayor of Cambridge. I'm immensely pleased to see you in that chair. Councillor Bick has doubts about the anti-poverty strategy, but when Jimmy's Night Shelter has actually reported on the 30th of May that they are turning away nine people a night, I do not and I cannot have doubts about an anti-poverty strategy to commit to the living wage, ensure a greater supply of affordable housing, and ensure that no city homes resident has to be evicted due to the grossly unfair bedroom tax. It's clear that Cambridge can no longer support the rising homelessness that we've been seeing. Where people are homeless, we must commit to doing all that we can for them, and Labour has actually committed to a review of the policies on tackling homelessness, focusing on prevention, and mitigating the impact on individuals and families. It may seem somewhat left cozy on the Liberal Democrat side of the chamber with the winds of change whistle in between you, but I doubt you can actually imagine staying outside in sub-zero temperatures until the third night when emergency cold weather is actually allowed to come in. And so therefore, I can only welcome the review of the emergency cold weather provision for the homeless and to actually review what we are doing for these people who have reached the bottom rungs of our society. Therefore, I welcome Kevin's comments on the affordability of new housing and welcome the Labour anti-poverty strategy despite councillor Bick's reservations.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Councillor Reardon, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as long as everyone else, congratulations on being up there. I would apologise for my coming being brief, but I imagine you'll appreciate that as well. I just wanted to highlight two things very briefly, and you'll hear plenty more from me in the future. There's this, a new and somewhat inaccurate caricature of our attitude as a group of being in force, in force, in force. I've flipped through our annual statement, and it seems to be disapproved page after page. But I'll just take one example, first my own. As a market councillor, and I'll admit also as a smoker, cigarette waste in the city centre, I was surprised to find out perfectly as early as the election half forced flash throws that the city council stopped. And it's nice to see that the public realm enforcement team, working with the bid ambassadors, will be proactively distributing them. That seems to me a sensible idea, educate with people opportunities to change, and then deal with the issues that come up after that. There's plenty of other examples I want to say, but I just wanted to very briefly say something about more general principles and attitude of the council. I'm very glad to see you back here two pages earlier. We're committed to further measures to increase equality and promote diversity. Those of you in the chamber who know me will know, and will be tired of me going on about this, but my first political activities weren't with the Labour Party or any party politics. It was in Slancashire after the race riots, where friends of mine from college were being beaten up simply for having a different skin colour. And I think it's really important that as a council, we recognise that although the issues we have in Cambridge thankfully and our idea is severe as we're in the time to best answer, that these issues do still exist, and that we do need to work together across parties, as a council, in all our communities, to make sure that everyone feels safe and valued it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bick. Councillor Robinson, please.
Madam Mayor, can I add my congratulations on your appointment? And I know you've had a big impact on the city, and not just because of the video access information, but also making sure I've helped for you. I want to talk briefly about the anti-poverty strategy which runs through our Labour manifesto. Many Cambridge residents have had their income reduced through the actions and the inaction of the Tory and Lib Dem coalition. Many workers have lost the value of their wages for receiving limited or no increase over the last three years. Cuts in benefits and introduction of the bedroom tax are hitting many of the least well. At the same time, the cost of living in the city has risen, especially the cost of housing. But you could add food and bus fares, major, it's not another reason. Nationally, Cambridge may be seen as thriving, and this is evidenced by our low levels of unemployment and low numbers of empty shops. But our city also exemplifies the increasing gap between the rich and the poor in the country. We are not all in it together. When the well-paid get even more well-paid, and the standard of living of the less well-off is reducing day by day, we are definitely not all in it together. Taking all forms of tax, including VAT, cash insurance, and counter tax, the level of taxation is higher now than it was under Labour, and especially for lower-paid people. The highly publicised cuts in top-rate income taxes last year put money in the pocket of the rich. For the lower-paid, the tax more heavily than they were under Labour. the rich, for the lower paid the tax more heavily than they were under Labour. The cost of energy and water supplies is also an increasing burden, and especially on those who are lower paid or on benefits. There are increasing numbers of individuals and whole households in which we live in poverty, some in absolute poverty and some in relative poverty. A society where sections of the population are marginalised and left out is unhealthy, and the increasing gap between rich and poor is increasing that marginalisation and that relative poverty. Under Liberal Democrats, the city councils pay little attention to the plight their colleagues in central government are causing many of our citizens. For example, the introduction of the bedroom tax, which has directly resulted in financial difficulty for many people. The powers and resources of the city council are of course limited. However, there are strategies and policies which will be introduced by this council to help improve the standard of living for those less well-off in the city. That is the task we have set ourselves, and we will do our best to achieve it. It's no good assuming that wealth will trickle down from improving the overall city economy. I fear that that approach is not taken by the Liberal Democrats and Tory coalition, and it's not working. The Liberal Democrats have made the same mistake in Cambridge, but the electorate rejected it on 22nd of May. Labour was elected on a manifesto that has running through it a pledge to tackle poverty and not abandon our city's residents to market forces. We will seek to defend our residents from the ravages of this Liberal Democrat and Tory government.
Thank you councillor Lord. councillor Roberts, please.
May I start by thanking the residents of our people, obviously returning, in one of our more challenging wards, but also one of the most beautiful we have in our city. I'd also like to thank you, Madam Mayor, obviously, it's great news that you've been elected, and also the past month, obviously, for all sorts of supply, you were a very good man, a very good man. Going on about my portfolio, I'll try and be as brief as I can. I think the backbone of what we're essentially suggesting, I think the issue that many of us have on this side, but in the day-to-day direction we have with people, many issues we put on our table haven't come to bear, they've come real concerning all sorts, and many of you know this, I actually think the most you can actually believe half the things you say. I mean, the chap that earlier was making the point that they give them, they don't know what they're saying, I think if you're not willing to believe anymore, you're a hussy for a party. But in terms of enforcement, the difference between us and you is that we are not using the excuse of being liberal as an excuse of being lazy. We will have a robust enforcement team, but first of all, before we do such things, we will make sure that the excuses are removed. One of the first things I did on the return of, being returned in this building, was contact my officers in Arsenal straight away for a map of all the bins, the recycling bins in the city, all the littering, parks and everything, you know, there are problems. No one has ever asked us for that before. It doesn't exist. You don't even know where all the bins are. That's what people are trying to act. Now, it is shocking, some of the things that many of us have been discovering over the last two weeks, where you've completely done all, I mean councillor Bick talks about it, it's almost like, you know, every house each, going out without a football, the extension is there without a hat. We, in our manifesto itself, I mean councillor Bick talks a very good game about obviously removing all power from area committees. I would add, you know, way to us from the first we sit with councillor A, and we will show you what we can be doing with area committees, bringing democracy back into the process. And instead of talking at great length about this increasing extension of which only three people there are concerned about, we will talk at great length about cleanliness, about dog crap, about recycling, about these that will actually go up.
Thank you councillor Roberts. can I have councillor Ashton, please?
Can you hear me? Don't need a microphone? People said I don't need a microphone. Congratulations, Madam Mur, well deserved. And can I take this opportunity to thank all the residents of this city who after fourteen years won't take back control? councillor Bick seems to think that we have somehow made this manifesto up by ourselves. This manifesto is listening to the people of this city. When I became a councillor three years ago, I never did that one. I was sat on that side. I was one of the few like you. And over three years, we actually said we want to run with it. We said it here, these are concerns we've got. We put motions forward to try and get a better standard of living, and what did you do? Delete all and amend with. Every motion we tried to do to try and have you, in a sense, stay in power, because that's what would have happened, you would have taken the credit. I taught my children when they break home to say sorry. All we've heard today is, no, we were right and we would have carried on what we're doing. The residents of this city have said, no, it's not right what you did do and we want to change. And we do not need you to stand up and tell us you will keep a check of us, because our residents do that and they've done that for the last fourteen years and give us these recommendations we want to put in. Enforcement being heavy-handed, who's going to be heavy-handed with these people? I've come to Cheltenham at eight thirty on a storm day in our open spaces and seen the people sat on the park who were out of their mind on every larger eight thirty in the morning, and young mothers and children who cannot walk across that open space and take their children to school. That's what we're talking about. Yes, we need to educate these people, but at the end of the day, if these people do not get educated, then action has to be taken. So thank you, Mr Bick, for telling us you will try and keep us in check, but we don't need you, our residents have said, we need to do it. Thank you.
councillor Ashton. councillor, something, please.
First of all, my most good wishes to you, councillor, wonderful person to have, councillor. I'd just like to make a short point with reference to councillor Johnson's speech, and that concerns the Tory advance, where he seems to be already in self-congratulatory mode. I would like, for the record, to point out that councillor, former councillor Sarah was, has been the moving spirit behind the organisation of the Tory advance, and the credit should go to her because she gave constantly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tomlinson. can I have a councillor lady, please?
Congratulations, Gerry, for coming now with the city of Cambridge. There's an awful lot in the transport planning remit that I could talk about, I'm not going to, but I'm going to confess on one aspect I be, and that's the local plan, which councillor Bick referred to. Those of us with time on council remember discussions surrounding the previous local plan, which adopted in 2006. In that local plan process, we as a labour group pointed out time and time again how fundamentally flawed that plan was. You identified from 2006 onwards, eight thousand houses, much-needed houses at the time, even more so now, to be built on Cambridge Airport, with a further four thousand to be built on Cambridge Airport in the next period of the second, this current local plan. You identified three thousand houses to be built on the site of the Anglia Waterworks. Again, we said, very unlikely, fundamentally flawed and consumed actually as a proposal. That was eleven thousand houses formulated on a city strategy to take us, 2016 was then, to provide the much-needed housing for the people of this city. Not one of those houses ever saw a drawing board, let alone a brick, and we wonder why now we are facing such a huge housing crisis in this city, which we are determined to try and deal with and improve the situation. But that is the importance of the local plans, and the reason why we weren't very keen to actually come out and say, great, well, the new local plan is all seen and all doubted, is because we have this experience of a fundamentally flawed plan, and to be honest, there are issues within the local plan which we think will be brought out within the examination process. In my new role now, clearly I am here to ensure that process works for the council as best as possible, but we reserve the right to make points about the local plan which we've inherited, and we will do so in a constructive way and in a proper, positive way if we need to. One of these issues has already been alluded to, and it will come back in the examination, it's quite likely that we will be tested on all parts by developers we all know and love, consortiums we all are familiar with in the planning field, but it's possible we will also be tested by our own county council. And that's something that councillors alluded to, and in an error of duty to cooperate, that's not a picture I see as a rosy one for us at this moment in time, but we will have to deal with it and be constructive and deal with our colleagues on county and district accordingly and properly to try and sort out these problems. And that's the other point I want to raise. We're a great sport tradition in this country, apart from losing our penalties in the World Cup, and that's to be gracious in victory and gracious in defeat. I've told my colleagues on several meetings, let's look forward, don't look back, let's look forward. We are given a remit, a mandate to deal with the challenges this city faces, and we should be magnanimous in victory, and we were hoping you'd be gracious in defeat. Clearly that's gone out the window, so all better off, hopefully you take your life, clearly some people have. But I say, I think one of the issues that I've noticed over the years is the issue of relationships with the partners who are partner passers of dealing with the challenges and the problems that this city and district face, and I hope a little bit of common sense, a bit more considerate behaviour on my part, hopefully assist that matter.
councillor McLeod. can I have your space, please?
A little bit of history, yes. Sorry about that. When I was first elected on the council back in 1992, same days councillor Weiss, councillor King, Colin, yes, I see, I see they're back there, it was the tail end of Thatcherism, and I was part of a Labour administration that had been in control for quite a long time, which protected this city from the worst ravages of that Tory government. Now, the way that some of us have been talking on this side, and on your side, is that on May 22nd, suddenly took control. No, that wasn't actually what really happened. What really happened started back in the election of 2011. The Liberal Democrat group had lost three city council elections on the trot and had clamoured to control desperately during that period of time. Because from 2011, twelve months after the 2010 general election, the people of Cambridge knew where they were going to be protected from the Lib Dem Tory coalition government and the way they'd been attacking the weakest people in society. I am proud to be here and part of a group which is putting forward an anti-poverty strategy, an anti-poverty strategy that the leader of the Liberal Democrat group on this council has criticised. Do the Liberal Democrats know where their moral compass is anyway? I don't think they do. Thank you.
thank you councillor Bick. can I have councillor Kent, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me add my congratulations to you on your appointment as mayor, wish you a very successful twelve months. I'd like to just make a couple of points. Firstly, I'd like to put part of politics aside, and firstly I'd like to say, I'd like to say congratulations to the new administration, to the leader and to the executive councillors. Having been in executive council for a number of years, it's the most fulfilling job, it's the most frustrating job, and on times it can be a very lonely job when you're making those very different decisions, and I wish them well. But there are a number of things that one needs to think about when, as a new administration, and one has to learn from history. Now, clearly, members in this chamber this afternoon have heard the new administration talk about the period of time that we were in control, and that's very fair, that's the most recent history. But if you go back further, clearly, members of the administration were also in control of this city, and I don't want to make political points this afternoon. Just let me mention, let me just mention a couple of things. Let me just mention a couple of things, because they have been raised, and in part I do as an Jack, but to remind you of when you were last in power. Two things, one, market square, you remember the scheme? I'm sure some of your more longstanding members remember, where there was a scheme for the renovation of Market Square, one of the previous Labour administration, which involved moving the market out to Cowley Road for a long period of time, a very grandiose fountain to be built in Market Square, it costed one and a half million if I recall correctly. Now, I just caution you, in terms of whatever measures you bring forward, to look back in the history. The same goes with commercial property. I'm quite interested in councillor Ower's relish for capitalism in relation to commercial property, given his other political balance, so that's an interesting point. So I welcome him coming forward in future scrutiny committees, telling me what his target to the improvement in the yield of commercial property is in relation to a city council portfolio for next one month or twenty-four months. I'd also want to mention that the last time we sold a major property investment in the city, it was the Graffin Centre in the late eighties, early nineties, and that was a very bad financial decision for a city council to make, so we have to be very careful in terms of commercial property. The final point I would make, I for one, do not want to see any inequality in this city, regardless of political colour, I think all members of this chamber have that view. I welcome the administration's support for that issue. I have a vested interest at this point, councillor Mayor, I'm a trustee of Winter Comfort, very heavily involved. We have just had our funding from the county council cut by fifteen per cent year on year for the next three years. The city council has retained its funding, so I welcome proposals coming forward from the administration to increase the funding for Winter Comfort, for the hard work it does, to meet that shortfall that the county council has left us, and I look forward to scrutinising any financial statement in the emergency body to see those types of items. Because if you are truly committed to removing inequality and deprivation in the city, those are the types of measures you have to undertake. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
thank you councillor Kent. could I have councillor Bick, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and apologies for the change in my hours and the time to have a word to speak, but congratulations on your elevation to that floor. I think nearly, I hope all the councillors in this group are here because we share the view that we want to work for the common good of the people of Cambridge. Where we differ is in how we see that common good, how we envision working towards that common good. As a Liberal and as a Liberal Democrat, I'm always worried when people try to say there is one way of doing things, and that we should be very vicious in those suits. And I'm a little bit worried about that conflict of philosophy. It might make it look worse, like we don't care, but in fact we do. We will be questioning your anti-poverty strategy, because we will be questioning whether spending money to do the job of Cambridge Water is a better use of taxpayers' money than increasing the grant to someone like Winter Comfort, and I have to congratulate councillor Kent for his optimism and attempts to get a commitment to more funding there. But that's the sort of challenge. We don't necessarily see that the best way of fighting poverty is through council officers in the guilt hall. Though sometimes the best way of fighting poverty is to get out and work with partners. I'm proud that when I would be sent to council of the community, wherever it was in huge a blitz, that I worked with councillor Ower on the credit union stake, because the credit unions were able to provide good service, and we provided money there, council money to kick-start loans where people who didn't have that relationship with the credit union. It was a practical solution, it was a good use of council money. And I will pay credit, councillor Ower, it was on my agenda, but he made sure he was not at the top of my agenda, but I'm somewhere down about number three, four, or whatever. We need to be careful, but we don't just assume that the guilt hall is the only way. Protect our voluntary sectors, and I really do welcome what he said to that, it is really reassuring. On other points, I'm going to have to pick up on councillor Ashton's comment. Those people on the front bench are fine. Those people on the front bench are fine, it's not going to solve their problems. That's the view from the Liberal side is that we need to work with those people who have been out there.
I just said we find it, I've got a footwork on now. Sorry.
Sorry, I lost my thread of thought, sorry. And fine is not the way to help those people. Enforcement is the threat of action or to criminalise them. I don't think it's helped us criminalise the vulnerable and the young. We will look at your proposals and we will make sure that the vulnerable and the young are protected from being criminalised per se. You disagree with me, that will come back and disprove me, I am sure. And to councillor Benko, did councillor Owers get the memo about being magnanimous in victory? I have to say, I'm trying to say that there's two quite bits I'm not on strategy resources because the double act, I've been watching the Long Road Muppet Show recently and I think we have the full of...
Actually, no.
And councillor Owers, or councillor Owers one, being nice about us and then one being horrible about us and then sometimes at some point they swap over and you're like...
It's going to be confusing for you.
That's why I'm glad I'm not on that committee. Anyway, more to this, councillor Benko, I've got some news which was a shock after three years of people actually quite fast in the air taking control. You're in control now, it's not enough to say, there's the 11,000 chat. And it's a shortfall, if that's what you think, you actually have to come up with the proposals to fix it. And throughout the last local plan scheme, there weren't that many options. We looked at the people, the people did look at the options, the places we could take out to be well, and there were good reasons for rejecting all of these. So we put forward in 2006 some schemes, they were good schemes, had things worked out, but clearly they didn't. So you now need to address that, you can't blame us for that, it's up to you. It will be morally destroying, however, to have some backing for the local plan from the various executive councillors. If we don't have unambiguous backing for it, I'm worried that at the public inquiry, the developers are going to have a field day because they will pick away at any doubt. Pick, 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 pick. And at that point, we could find ourselves in the worst possible situation without a local plan. And we must say we do all understand the implications of that. So I would just like to make that. Finally, I just want to add my congratulations to councillor Herbert. I've always enjoyed working with him, I don't have to change once you're the leader. And I look forward to making life miserable for the person I'm shadowing. Have fun. I'll see you afterwards.
You're not shadowing me, you're making my life miserable.
My work here is done.
Thank you very much, councillor Pitt. I think the debate's finished, so can I ask councillor Herbert a favor?
Thank you, madam mayor. Right, how do I be magnanimous? I'll be reasonably magnanimous, as you answer. We are disappointed that you didn't seek to amend our annual statement because that deprived us of a great opportunity to analyse both your past record and your claims that we're somehow going to completely lose track. In your speech, councillor Pitt, you didn't listen to my statement at the beginning, which was that we are determined to see through an effective local plan and we will. If we are in the opposition, we were not in any sense able to construct that local plan, we weren't able to integrate the transport cockling with it, we weren't able to address the issue of the added secondary school, we weren't able to look fully at some of the housing options that we would have done had we been in your shoes. But it has a lot of merit in it, as proposed. As you'll be aware, and I'm sad that the local plan inquiry is going to probably be delayed beyond any control that this council can say by three or four months, but every few months matters. There will be issues, as councillor Benko said, that we may need to address. There are some issues that we recognise need to ourselves to be addressed. But if the inspector chooses not to raise them, then we're not going to necessarily make life more difficult. It is, as councillor Benko stated, a severe weakness in housing supply in this city that you bet almost half the city's housing promises on the airport and it wasn't going to work. And as councillor Benko said, it wasn't that we didn't say that it wasn't going to work, that was what we said in 2006, 2008, 2010. So we are probably about three years behind delivering the housing supply for the city. On congestion, it has been claimed that the Liberal Democrats are the sole people who secured this city deal. It's been claimed in your literature, I can read it out to you, councillor Pitt, but I won't. It has to be a partnership with other people and that is why we do need to work with South Cambridgeshire and with the county council. In terms of some of the issues that you raised on finance, I mean, you can leave hanging your claim that finance officers disputed our budget amendment, but you're wrong. I don't know what meeting you were in, perhaps I'll just leave it like hanging in the air. Produce us the evidence, councillor Pitt, to support your statement earlier on that our budget amendment was a default and was not supported and was challenged as being financially irresponsible because that is what you claimed. We will put an amendment down, a Stratton Resources Committee in July, we will put a mid-year financial review assisted by the need for us to appoint and have a new head of finance. And you can challenge us, but don't try and pretend that somehow what we've done is improper because it wasn't. On councillor Kentrell's point in terms of yield and treasury management, I can understand our rise and us following a safe approach. We have in different ways said that treasury management should be followed. And there are issues about how balances resources, but as councillor Owers has said, we're proposing a strategy that's a mixed investment strategy so that it has a range of approaches. And we would probably have invested in commercial property several years ago and either we're going to invest in that or we've got assets, I mean, we've got Mill Road depot reviewed, we've got opportunities in County Road. It makes admirable sense for us to use resources that we've got, not necessarily all of the time to invest in acquisitions, but to actually invest in those properties and to have partnerships so that we're not going straight into the situation where we're just dispensing with the assets. So we will see whether it's a variation on a clay farm arrangement. It probably won't be like K1 in terms of the land that we've got, an eminently good platform, but which we have very little control over. So we will see. We believe that by use of property, things will be improved. Simply, the Tour de France was not secured by the Liberal Democrats. I think the understanding was that Yorkshire was very keen on Cambridge and the initiative actually came from Yorkshire. We're not understating the work that councillor Brown put in, we're certainly not understating, I mean, the number of trips, I think, that the chief executives and the visits officers have put into the trip. I mean, we have done visiting Yorkshire a lot of favours simply by the number of trips that we've been up there as part of this arrangement. But clearly, a lot of work has been put in and we are two months in and we're going to have a stunning event. We will have to pick up some of the issues. We don't think some of the contingency planning for things like basically just emptying the bins and some of the work that was, some of the plans there are very solid and we'd have to prepare our residents for that, that we've got with the bank holiday and we've got Tour de France activity that week, we've also got other issues. So the Tour de France is great news, but it wasn't again solely a Liberal Democrat invention. The anti-poverty strategy will go through testing and we will. I mean, it is right that we implement measures which are on the table, have been posted and we will be looking at both how we measure the impact of that strategy and further outcomes. It was interesting that councillor Pitt used the phrase intoxicated. We won't be intoxicated ourselves, but there are issues about people who are intoxicated in this city. And to respond to councillor Reiner, yes, there will be consultation. But we said on your side, you actually have close minds about some of these issues. So when we've had debates in the past about interventions, it's been the Liberal Democrat view, no, none. And we've had 10 years when we've had serious problems in parts of the city and there hasn't been a discussion. Basically, you closed it off. Councillor Hittkin has introduced lots of interesting thoughts about the market square and a number of other proposals and clearly, how the city centre works is critical. It has to be a welcoming place, it has to develop. There has been a sense that because councillor Kentrell's point, our Labour, stuck up the last consultation on the market square, well, we won't have another one. Well, there has not been, in 14 years councillor Kentrell, you have not progressed any discussions about the future of the market square. It's a little bit like the 18th century where things took a long period to evolve. And clearly, if we're going to, and we're going to have a meal in the place later on, that Mort Block ran the city from, which is just, he ran the city for 26 years from what is now very nice of the low-budget council, the restaurant. But so there are opportunities for us to listen and learn and I'm sure there'll be a dialogue from councillor O'Reilly amongst others, John Hittkin and others. And we'll come back to the issues of car parks and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities. Yes, we share a lot of the same agenda with you, but I've got a sense, any spirit of joint working really or any spirit of let's investigate these suggestions or others. We will listen at the proposals from your side and if there are proposals or initiatives or ideas, I think that will be more the sense that we are actually in this together. We will discuss and we clearly do have to look at issues like the area committees and I won't bore people by this going too much more, but we will come back to committee in July. And I think we've given faith in the scrutiny process that I think was soundly put together by the House and obviously, I think we had a good process and it's going to be challenging. I'm sure that you will challenge us and my side. We have a good process, we have a good arrangement for property involvement, we have a great city and there are plenty of things to be done and I...
Thank you very much, councillor Herbert. Right, can we now take a vote on the motion?
Yes.
All those favors. I understand that we have a public wishes to address the meeting and ask three separate questions. Under the scheme allowing members of the public to speak at council meetings, each speaker must address these or her comments to the chair of a relevant committee or a relevant member of the executive. Each question or statement must be limited to three minutes with a further two minutes for a supplementary question or comment or something that has been said. There is normally an overtime, overtime limit for public questions of 30 minutes, including the time taken by responses to questions, but this can be extended at my discretion. Will mister Carleton please come forward and ask his first question?
You can have a man. Congratulations on your appointment and congratulations to the late brick on taking office and good luck in your endeavors. Question number one to councillor Herbert regarding public speaking, not responding to correspondence from local councillors and area committees.
So, question?
The question is inviting councillor Herbert and his executive to deal with the problem of local taxpayer-funded institutions ignoring correspondence from local councillors and local area committees. Thank you.
Thank you, mister Carleton, and also appreciate some of the dialogue and some of the suggestions that you've contributed on your blog. The issue of responding to correspondence, the council, I mean, I can speak on behalf of the council. Clearly, what we inherit is a commitment that council officers and I imagine councillors as well respond within a reasonable time. The commitment in terms of ringing us up or tweeting, I think we've set, for instance, on Twitter standards of about four hours for the council to respond. Some is not on Twitter, but the council standard of response is seven working days. Clearly, councillors know that sometimes issues that are really complicated, we don't get response in seven working days. So sometimes the commitment has to be stated really that we will follow it through until there is a response. In terms of responses from others, you rightly said to us that councillors should engage more with education institutions of our issues in terms of how the council listens to people between the ages of 13 and 18. So I'm just following my assumption about who is or isn't responding. I guess, I'm not sort of demonstrating negativity, I hope, but I'm not in a position to influence directly the responses from other organisations. If in the first few months we focus on what the council does, then that has to be archived. If you can assist and if you, as you do raise in the area committee that you live in and so on, then those are matters of community interest and will be followed through. If you give us a list of, and obviously we've got the minutes of the recent area committees and we can look at that, then we can at least follow through as a list some of the issues that you raised.
Just to clarify, my concern is that correspondence that councillors have undertaken where they have written to other public institutions such as schools, colleges, where the bus or rail companies, for example, where that correspondence has not been responded to substantively or just been completely ignored, personally, I think is a contempt for democracy and is a contempt for all of you. We, the residents, have elected you to represent us and what does it say to all of you when the correspondence that you're sending to other institutions is just being completely ignored? Personally, I think that's unacceptable. And now that we've got a new party in power, a new executive in power, I think now is the perfect opportunity to send out a very clear message to all of those institutions spending taxpayers' money, that you have democratic mandates to represent us and actually all responses, all correspondence that you send to those institutions should come back in a timely and timely manner. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I mean, we are in dialogue with both Coleridge School and Long Road on engagement and in fact, Long Road asked us to organise an event here, so we will do that. I think we'll use that as the opportunity to open up a discussion. I mean, councillor Ashton's briefly gone out for a glass of water, I guess, but he has written to Never Hall and Hill Road and will follow up and seek to get answers, madam Mayor, mister Carleton.
Second question is on the back of a recent announcement from Cabinet Office on skills for the council officers, basically saying particularly communication skills.
for council officers, basically saying particularly communication skills, citizens who do not have digital and social media skills in the council capacities will be prevented from even cremated or moving sideways, to ask the council leader if, with the chief executive, they will investigate the possibility of making data analysis skills and basic social and digital media skills within a public policy context, an essential competency for all new management jobs that are advertised internally or externally within the council.
I guess the simple answer is that if we're appointing somebody to manage street cleaning, because we're going to have a vacancy for ahead of home streets and other spaces, that our main competency is going to be are they going to keep streets clean? The team that we've got, and I'm sure councillor O'Reilly will contribute to some of the work that will be developed, we've got a really good central team, and without expecting somebody to do a lot more work than they're already doing, we anticipate there to be an expansion of the use of digital media. We already have a central digital media Twitter feed and various other feeds. And it has been encouraged, and it will continue to be encouraged, that we have a feed on recycling, on the corn exchange, on chips and on others. So I think what we're more productively going to do, and for you to see, is that elements of the, whilst there will be a new initiative and a fresh initiative on communications, that will A) improve the amount of things coming out of the centre, but also continue to support locally. We do have quite a lot of people with those skills, but I think what we, and without wanting to limit the agenda of encouraging communications locally, we don't want bits of the council to start doing stuff unless they've actually got those skills together. And I think as I'm demonstrating with things like recycling, chips, and with the corn exchange, we've basically said you've got the skills, get on with it, and that will continue.
And finally, question number three to councillor Johnson. The question is regarding the Cambridge Society Spa coming up and asking if at the next full council meeting, you could provide a summary and a report to all of the councillors here on how that is progressing. And part of the origin of the Cambridge Society Spa started from the Twitter exchange back in 2012, when councillor Johnson was standing for election. It ended up in the Lakehead Manifesto. I'm delighted to see that councillor Johnson is now in the executive council position to actually deliver on that, so I'm looking forward to looking on that. Thank you.
May I make a microphone, shall I? I just want, thanks for, well, I should say, first of all, thanks to mister Carleton for his practical risk assessment guide. I'm sure this will come very handy as I start to build on my new book earlier. And I think councillor Roberts also thanks for the sub he gave to. So in terms of the community fair, yes, it's a planning, planning will start next year. Officers will start discussing developing options through partners. Reason why I'm hoping to start it is because, as you appreciate, officer time is being spent with grants of you and other things which are quite important. But I would want officers first to discuss ideas for volunteers, centre, universities to go upon the work they did after the motion that came to council last year, that was proposed by councillor Roberts about person things between town and gap. Organisations such as the volunteer centre, Cambridge Hub, the Cambridge Student, Community Action, and the Angler Ruskin Students Union, volunteering centre, it's also a lot of work in matching up students and volunteers with voluntary groups. So we need to make sure that there's no duplication of effort in respect of that, in respect of the preparation space. But certainly, when we start work on this in the new year, we're seeking input from the side of another, another interested parties. Can I just confirm, you asked, you gave me a four-part question, but you only, can I just confirm, you only asked me about the community fair and not about community mapping?
That's all incorporated.
Oh, it's all incorporated, so I'll just give you the response to that then. The council works for voluntary sector organisations such as the Cambridge Council for Voluntary Services, the Ethnic Lives Board of Volunteers, the Disability Cambridge Year, and then sport. So we can, in terms of community mapping, we can, there's already some structure in place to try and have a joint approach to volunteering in the city and community action. There's also cambridgehere.net, which I'm sure you are aware of, which is a great database where groups can, you know, share resources and lists and whatnot. But so in terms of organisation of community fair, in terms of trying to create better opportunities for community groups to find others, if you're like-minded or want to get involved in volunteering, and there's already a basis, there's already a structure, there's already a format of doing that. And I want my officers to continue work on the Lakehead Manifesto, making the pledges that we made, so there's undertaking the work that was already underway. And I don't want to duplicate work that's already been undertaken by the voluntary sector. I think you also asked, you haven't asked on microphone just now, but I think you also requested some assistance with events that you're organising quite soon. All right. It's the community summit that you're organising at Angler Ruskin. And my vast record was the head of community development, so if he or senior member of the staff can assist you on the day of the summit, if they are available and if the subject matters appropriately, he may speak at all this in the theatre. But as I said, my officers have got a very, very challenging programme to implement, and their time is quite precious in respect of the grants of you and all of the things which we are, if we want to implement from our manifesto. But if credit is available, we'd be very happy for a member of this team to come along and speak. And when your brochure is available, let me know and I can send the details again.
So thank you to everyone for your responses. And certainly, you won't be seeing as much of heavy point uffles as you have been before, but we'll move on from that. But also, on record, my thanks to everyone that voted for uffles in Coleridge.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine people voted for uffles, and nobody voted for you, Kip, so that's a thumping victory. So the way I'm going to be conducting the work I do in the community is going to be along the lines of those sorts of written questions in advance and inviting councillors to go away and discuss with officials before coming back with future responses. Yesterday, I was at my regular social media surgery session where I hold local people learning to use social and digital media. And I think this is one thing, one example of where I'd love to see that local voluntary service embedded in what the council does. Because amongst other things, it would save a lot of people money on training, I'm pretending to put myself out, please, as well, by saying we can get some free training. But I think that would be really useful if the council and Cambridge Online could work together. If anything, just to promote, so we can promote to local people what online services you have. But also, in terms of the wider, bigger picture, as a longer-term thing, thinking about how we deliver digital learning in Cambridge, because at the moment it just feels like the picture is a little bit too fragmented. But I take councillor Johnson's point, Labour were elected with, from a majority of 25 councillors on the council, as your manifesto to implement in the morning. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to the oral questions now. Aside from the last 30 minutes, at the conclusion of the 30 minutes, the executive councillor or leader has the prerogative, they provide a written response to any questions that have not been covered. A list of the oral questions is available in the information pack on page 31. Will the councillors indicate please put their questions to, in order of show? The councillor here has the first question.
Question one. You may also say, of course, of Tim Ward, have a response that you'd like. Okay, basically, there was a bit of confusion about the question in terms of whether you want this after this year, because it's taken annually, not in a financial sense. Yeah, yeah. I'll be, I'll be, comparison with national, basically, this is from the Manchester Dark Side measures, which I'll go into in a response. So the question is in terms of how we sign for the large air quality monitors shown out as hazardous as all. The automatic monitors in 2013 were triggered at the mean of the course of the year on Park Street, Long Road, Unim Road, Manual Roads, and East Street, Victoria Avenue. The Audi B objective, not yet, Ogle and Ogle B. They were triggered on multiple occasions, obviously, throughout the course of surveys throughout the year. The annual daily B objectives for the PM10 achievement, there is a guideline to go with this, at automatic monitoring stations, the PM10 daily objective exceeded 15 times out of the 35. Park Street, 14 and 11, a vulnerable place, Montague Road, sorry, not Montague Road, effectively, 35 times or more exceedances in a year with the weekly objectives. Of the 54 normal automatic monitoring sites, five sites recorded levels above the air quality objective level, compared with 12 in 2012, 19 in 2011, and 36 in 2010. There is a form of balance here, more detailed, I'll go with that, so I'll wait, I'll wait to see. Thank you for that detail. I definitely want to make note of it also, appreciate you for the effort to make. I don't know if you saw the recent report by the Cambridge News, where they're going to nationally pick up on air quality issues. I was just wondering whether this year we might use to continue work with, done with our, so in the summer, we're best with the background, to try and get the county to take their responsibility in dealing with the transport issues, as well as the work that's already started on looking at whether taxi licensing can be used to improve the air quality conditions given, and this is the thought about the start of the aim, it's that having to be encouraged on taxi meeting, the aid to the people sent there, and a positive engagement. Yeah, we are obviously more happy to work alongside itself, here's one of those structural examples, where obviously, this number is quite close to us. Basically, everything is up to really, I guess, if there's clearly something which would be concerned, the number of people outside the city itself is not getting smaller, as councillor Hittkin mentioned earlier, to have a more sustainable range on the centre. Obviously, all of us don't see this number going up. So I'm more happy, I'll send off the information and if you get back to the evidence, the impact of the doctor, I've got to say, it's not something that's always been close to my heart, but I'm fully all in, fully.
Councillor Reiner, question two.
Thank you, madam mayor. I have to say, I was a little bit surprised by this. I don't think I've ever had a conversation with anybody before the election about fencing on Stourbridge Common. Having discussed it with officers, the only two fences that we could imagine that this referred to were the one surrounding fence tree on Stourbridge, the fence in part of the relegated potatoes. As far as I'm aware, that fencing has been removed, although some of the potatoes remain. The other is the temporary fence on Stourbridge Common erected in April 2014 to protect 330 metres of recently repaired riverbank. New riverbanks being formed using bioengineering techniques, the fence was installed to aid the establishment of marginal plants and to grow up along the bank. This temporary fencing was, as I'm sure you know, exempt, exempt from section 38 of the Commons Act, and as it will be issued from no longer than 12 months. On-site signage has been installed, explained in the work, the Friends of Stourbridge Common have published information on Friends of Stourbridge Common website. The establishing vegetation will be assessed in 2014, it will be in possession, the fence on Stourbridge Common will be removed at this stage. If the fence is retained, then it will be no longer than 2014. I do hope that officers will...
Thank you very much, actually, I wasn't aware of this, very again, part of your response email, I think I'm full. I was concerned about potatoes as well. My follow-up question, actually, I feel a bit guilty, I was suddenly asked if potatoes were taken hostage, I wasn't able to answer that, I'd like to know about that. And also, I'd like to know about the fence on Commons Common.
Madam Mayor, I am actually happy to answer that.
They can't hear their questions, right?
As to the relegated potatoes, I am not aware of potatoes having been taken or held hostage. It is a fact that I spend an awful lot of time on potatoes, because I have a lot of it. It is quite difficult to remove...
This is not to talk about vegetables.
It is. It is quite difficult to actually remove all potatoes from a patch. If any part of potato is left, even the tiniest part of the tuber, they will take to regrow. In fact, you can actually regrow potato from potato peelings. So I would expect some of the relegated potatoes to return, so we will be keeping eye on potatoes. I'd say I don't recall making any commitments on Coldwell's Common either to remove any fencing there, I was wondering if you had a little bit more. But as I said, I'm happy to answer the question. And as I sincerely hope, madam mayor, councillor Reiner is aware, pulling the initial consultation on the management plan for Coldwell's Common, officers drafted an issues and options document for a second round of public consultation. And that's a document that will be considered at the July Community Services Committee. It was clear, though, from that report, that a core group of site users felt strongly at a section of fencing on the new common, on the common rather, distracted from the open landscape and impeded free access on the site. And for those of you who do know your commons, there is currently a section that blocks off access between a strip, the playing field and a strip of nature reserve, slightly overgrown with a lovely path along it running along the railway line, and that's an area that's particularly enjoyed by walkers and dog walkers, walkers. As the fence originally blocked access from steps to come over the railway line and around in front of the bench, a great chance of actually had to be chopped out of the fence to allow access to the bench and across to the playing field, leaving this particular stretch of fencing fairly pointless in the great scheme of things. And it actually remains the source of greatest distress to those who use the common daily. Users distressed the stretch were particularly afraid that their little slice of heaven by the railway line would be cut down and used for paddle access from one half of the common to the other. And it's for these reasons that I'm announcing today a moratorium on all grazing on the east end of the common in the nature reserve, until the outcome of the consultation on the management plan is concluded. And that consultation will mean that everybody can have their say, and that's both on the wrong side and the right side, and for people who use the common from further away. In the meantime, I've decided that particular stretch of fencing on the parallel to the railway line will be removed. Officers have been instructed to remove the section in June, July of this year. The fencing material will then be decided for use on common and other open spaces across the city. So I think the short answer to the question that you meant to ask is another week's time.
Councillor Reiner, question three.
Do you want to ask the question, has any effort been made at the time needed to, sort of say, moving area planning items to planning committee? Yes, it has, in the form of the report that's going to the Environment and Scrimbling Committee, impossible to say for fair, I've been told, but certainly to the Environment and Scrimbling Committee. The meeting will run on until it finishes, as is normally the case with meeting, but clearly, if it goes past a cut-off time system to be discussed after time of scrupality, then a fallback meeting time will have to be put in the diaries, just as we have fallback meeting times around all council meetings.
And this will arrange the honourable sign to make, as it says in the annual report, so it will make easier councillors to advocate on behalf of their residents, but will actually make it more difficult for those residents who want to advocate for themselves to get to the meeting. Are you going to put any, are you going to investigate how you could help residents to get to Guildhall at the appropriate time? Or will they just have to sit there until it comes up, take a whole day off work and sit there until it comes up? Or how are you, and that is assuming that you are continuing to allow residents to advocate for themselves. You haven't said you're not going to, so I'm assuming that you are.
In terms of the timing of planning meetings, area or central, clearly, there are pros and cons about people with different circumstances as to whether they can make evening meetings or they can make daytime meetings. whether they can make daytime meetings, and clearly, that's a difficult concern. Certainly no changes in the deadlines or speaking rights envisaged, and we may want to comment on them in the Environment Strikery Committee if they can, but there's nothing envisaged. But clearly, we are aware that people allocate their times to come and speak on their applications. We will try and assist them within the framework of returning area meetings, sorry, area planning to central committee as best we can. One suggestion, but again, this is for the Environment Strikery Committee to consider, be wrong with me to preempt a discussion about, is to have a split section between major applications and or minor household applications, which would suggest that we can have a, not before that mine begins, the household and minor applications. Again, that's what the Environment Strikery Committee.
Question four, Madam Mayor.
Since Counsel Herbert, our leader of the City Council, is expected to sign the City Deal on April 11st next week, and the Chisum Trail, I understand, is a component part of that negotiation, and then obviously, if signed, form agreement, then that will be paid for your work, yes?
I want to add comment from the executive councillor, Madam Mayor. I'd just draw the members' attention to the latest statement, in terms of the annual statement, where they talk about the Chisum Trail and says, say, providing it does not have an unacceptable environmental impact and proves deliverable. And I hope that the executive councillor will follow the comments of his good colleague, councillor O'Reilly, when she said she will listen to stakeholders in relation to these key infrastructure projects, and indeed, the Chisum Trail, I think we all agree, is a key infrastructure project for the city, but a balance has to be struck, and make sure things get done. So I do hope that the executive opposite will consider those words when evaluating the issues as the Chisum Trail moves across some of the key open spaces in the city. Thank you, Madam.
There was a question there, sorry. You agree with this comment?
If you're advocating ignoring a strong public feeling that comes through a public consultation, which I raise what you were always hinting at, then I'll have to sketch a way of that. Clearly, we've had a consultation on all major project matters, this is very important, should be done properly, it hasn't been done properly in the past. In terms of the Chisum Trail, I mean, if you talk to numbers of public, some have heard of the Chisum Trail, some actually understand what it means, if you talk about a parallel cycle route from the Cambridge Street on the Cambridge Street D9, facilitate access to the main railway station now, obviously, access to the new proposed science park station, then people actually know what you're talking about. So I'd always capture these sort of jargon words accordingly, I think you need to explain what people actually understand. But clearly, there is a component part of the City Deal that talks about the bridge across the river alongside the railway line, it also talks about trail links, and they are moving out of potential or possible links, and clearly, they would involve different areas of the city, and will be consulted on accordingly with the residents who did have views upon them.
Counselor Reed, question one.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I suspect that Counselor Reed goes apart with the answers to this, but I always suspect many members don't, so I will answer this as fully as I can. Obstructions on the highways such as A Bor was more recently regarded as King's Parade. Street banners for unofficial tourist groups or tourist companies are enforced by the county council under the Highways Act, and City Council's officers have been working quite closely with the district highway manager and enforcement team to visit King's Parade and ask those banners to be removed. However, they have subsequently reappeared, they were there at lunchtime, if anybody went and had a look. And realistically, the county council's ability to enforce against this activity on a regular basis is going to probably be limited. Those of us who are aware of the group like Graff, Depp, No, there's actually quite limited resources in the county council for this kind of activity. The district highway manager has also raised some doubts over the Easter Highway Act, as there could be some argument for balance for self-structural obstruction. Therefore, City Council officers are investigating whether training standards can be, actually, can be taken by training standards, as some of the banners state, tourist info guide tools meeting points, and even use a little live for tourist information office does, which has given the impression to some visitors, unsurprisingly, that they are officially part or affiliated to the official tourist information centre. And it is likely that proceeding through the method of training standards will be a more efficient and effective way of enforcing against the balance.
Thank you. I know that you have a concern in this express, and I'd like to be reassured that, so not just like the obstruction of the pavement, which is quite clearly placed in places not to minimise that, but also the visual intrusion of having these banners right in the centre of, you know, one of the most beautiful streets in one of the most beautiful cities in the world. I appreciate that you yourself don't have any direct control of this, but as a matter of taking the lead into, you know, I hope you will to deal with other parties about this, with the City Council officers on training standards, that is an excellent route to county council's enforcement team, where the issue has been raised by the City Council. And, you know, I think it is incumbent on us to continually ask the county council to pursue this. But I think there is another area which you perhaps need to think about, which is the police. I have had a phone call from the county council official officer, in one regard, on email, but saying that he feels he's police background, so we would like to seek your cooperation in dealing with all various parties on this and about all the people in the police area in particular.
Thank you, yeah. I'm delighted to hear that the members' party officers are encouraging the enforcement, and I'm very happy to work across with the county council and with the police. The trouble with going purely down the district highways and county council enforcement routes, I suppose, is that it is, it's the obstruction grounds that make it very, very difficult to enforce the balance unknown, as you say, it's difficult to argue in some cases that they actually constructed, that there are an obstruction. So, but I'll come to that in a second, and this is why I think that training standards might be the most effective way. Having said that, although we will look for the fastest and most effective way of dealing with these kind of problems, the accessibility of city centre and obstructions in general are something that we care quite deeply about, and Counselor Bird, our new mayor, has been raising these issues countless times over the years, and has indeed sort of taken us out in wheelchairs over the course of several years, and I believe Counselor Price discovered to his embarrassment, one in the back of his leg and the head. This is an issue that matters deeply to us, it matters on a personal level, because of Counselor Bird, and it matters on a more general level that we want to improve accessibility of the city centre for everybody, and for the people who find it most difficult to access it, people who have the most problems. So we will be reviewing the accessibility of the city centre this summer, with views bringing an initial report outlining our responses by the, our options, I suppose, by the autumn. And I'd like to address those issues of accessibility in conjunction with businesses in the city centre as well. It isn't simply a matter of enforcement, though enforcement, including down the police road route, is an important one to explore, especially specifically with the issue of tourist balance. But at the same time, although accessibility is a positive thing raised, is a vital issue, you want to do that, if possible, in conjunction initially with businesses, so not stymieing their creativity, I suppose, and ingenuity, but pointing out that accessibility actually has to take priority. We are not, as I think we've made clear over the course of this fairly long meeting, afraid to use enforcement as a tool, if that tool is available and proportionate. We have to explore how available and proportionate that is, and you will, of course, appreciate that I've been in office for all two hours or so, so members will have to wait for the outcome of a review for a more detailed response on accessibility. Three hours, if I'm correct.
I wanted you to think up my thoughts about visual intrusion.
Yeah, no, I take your point about visual intrusion. It is quite difficult to legislate and force against visual intrusion specifically, but training standards is probably the best way, I think, to address that.
And that's the question we'll answer, thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Avery.
Counselor Avery asks about ward bits and taking that from outside. Basically, we're going to start by controlling the bays after the issue, which we think are ruled by wards, as in three, but affect everyone to some degree. In terms of the data they function to allow the EMTs to all rest on the ground level. For example, we take waste services, there's come a new, there is come a bit of optimization service, which has that, it's all part of the system, but there isn't equivalent for waste, hence why I look for the map, very early, it exists. So it's also looking at what things we have left in stock, there is some stock appears as far as I can stand, again, those out, especially in summer months, and then going for it and so on, in terms of our existing enforcement detail. In terms of, obviously, what creates a ward bit, ward bits essentially are uniform offices, of which there will be three, a full-time dog ward, a three, a part-time dog ward, some cycle offices that you arrange in rapid response, teams do also targeted hot spots where we believe there is, as Counselor's, litter and dog bounding, specifically to individual wards. Importantly, and we'll get more into this on the next issue of the motions, one thing should be decided today in favor of pest control, we will be implementing, is talking to the pest control officers, it's very clear that in years gone by, that our generation under your administration, no doubt, when you first were in power, they used to do a awful lot more preventive work, everything we did had to be active. So we will be looking at trying to improve within the ward bits, preventive treatments in every ward, to stop pest control, especially, especially France. Obviously, on top of that, there is, as you mentioned to Counselor Biff, is, some scopes are looking to what's the water sector, we would do, sports and so on, especially that all the way to the chapel sector, church especially, I know that Counselor Mark Ashton goes out with. Now, in terms of implementation, and this again will come with using to Counselors exist, we will be bringing them to the area committees. So the plan itself is to have an officer, as it stands, obviously, we are managing change, you come up with a very good idea, it's flexible, more than on board, there are more than adding. The plan itself, so obviously, four to areas, this is about, it's what the aims are, the targets are, and progress updates, coming back, of which, as Counselors, all of us can lead into the process. So it's not part of political, we're not just going to clean the east for the city all the more, we'll get to the unions and the trumpets and the funnies and anyone else. But more importantly, the public can lead it, and the public can have their say. And on top of that, in terms of all of those additional aspects that we hope to bring to the areas, we will aim to establish in an annual report, so you can see what will be this extra, if you look at the bread and butter issues, this is very much the jam, what the jam is, all the things you wouldn't have got in terms of the enforcement, what they actually bring in. If it's not working, obviously, we'll have to change it. If pest control, if the rest of it work isn't working, you need to.
Counselor Ross, have you seen it?
Yep. Sorry. With you here, but what I like, what I see, I like, and congratulations on your appointment. Thank you very much for that very full response, this is an admirable thing that you're going to do with this agenda, you found, it seems, I have found perfectly the special alchemy of new, more resources or old resources and new services for the work, so congratulations with that. I suppose specifically what I'm interested in, and you did mention funding, so let's get there, the reporting wards here, and as I understand it, you will be doing one ward each month on a strict rotation. How do you maintain services in all the other wards, far as the particular ward that apparently going to be, I'm just asking, just yet, or even that new, how do you maintain services in all the other wards, far as wards that caught your eye are getting this special?
As I say, it's not the ward that caught my eye, it's the issue of what the wall will have on there. Now, in terms of, and it's probably easier to express it again, when I replace, I'm a councillor, I'm a member of a debate that I'm not here, the councillor Brown made a point at the time, the councillor Brown, made the point that you get the bread and butter issues right, well, this is on top of the bread and butter issues, the enforcement team, not only, it's we put in money, the pest control, not only we put in more money, we're spending money, we're not removing them, which was at one point potentially on the council, we're not doing this, so we're funding it properly. In terms of deciding that the trumpets and all the rest of the ward rotation, this is very much, in terms of implementation, and will be discussed, I'll do my best to make sure it gets to the committees, so Counselor, it now is in itself, to make your contribution. If we, as councillors, more part of politics, if we think that the pest ring will be in our area, if we rotate teams around, if they take your, if you're, you know, take that area, the pest control, the best work is happening in Trumpington, while we're upping enforcement patrols on certain roads within Queen Edens, and so on. There will be no short, short changing of services that they don't want elsewhere, this is very much, this is, when you attack us for spending money and making long jobs, these aren't long jobs. So you can't then attack us for, 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 for spreading the butter too thin, this is very much, what you make it, if you don't like it, don't use it. I'm sure other councillors in the neighbouring wards within your area will use the resources. And it doesn't mean that we're going to see a fall of the services within central, so, you know, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Okay, that ends all your questions. Okay. Right, we're going to move on now to the motions. But before we do that, I need to say to you that we are getting short time now, some of us have got engagements to go to, so. And I'm sure you have as well, and it's been a long day, so if we can keep to the times, that would be really great. Okay, so I call on now the first motion, motion A, I call on Counselor Reed to move motion A.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, congratulations on your appointment, I'm pretty real pleased, and I know very much you enjoyed it as well. The annual meeting was a strategic meeting, and it seems to my mind to bring forward a motion, which, whose topic is the relationship, strategic relationship as we go with government as central government. I just find a political change, it seemed a good moment to bring forward a motion where I hope it is by consensus across the parties. Subject to my motion is a report that has been published earlier this year, which evaluates the UK system of local governments against the 1985 Charter of Local South Government. This charter was signed up to by the Blair government in 1998, one of Tony Blair's better decisions. I was only aware of it when I joined an LGA committee a couple of years ago, three or years ago, and therefore, I'm a range of copies will be distributed today, I know that Counselor Herbert is aware, I'm very pleased about that. The UK system of local governments has been reviewed twice by peer groups from our countries, and the last time was in 2013, with a report published in, sorry, 2013, the report published in 2014, saying that progress has been made towards meeting charter conditions. And I'd like to just, it's a long report, I'd just like to pick out some findings, and I hope that you really agree with. There are good comments about partnership and consultative relationships between local governments as central governments. Counselor MacPherson, Counselor John James will understand why, I will point out, actually, it says that the English relationships have got a lot to learn from those from Wales in the standard two. There are good comments about the leadership and coordination role of local authorities with regard to other service providers in their area, very relevant to the public question that, and to answer your question I asked, Counselor O'Reilly, today. The role we have in terms of other service providers crucially in our area, while compared with many other local countries, we have quite a weak partnership. The recommendation for the devolution of power to councils, I quote in my report, the power to discharge responsibilities sometimes appears to be highly restricted by central public. You will discover this in your own, I think you might find it as frustrating as we have there. But above the things I want to comment today are about local government financial issues. The report says, I quote, the ability to provide essential services for local authorities is under huge pressure with austerity. The complex financial formula that applies The complex financial formula that applies to local government funding, I quote, produce considerable uncertainty and effects of inward improvement. The report makes it very clear that the achievement of a diversified base of local revenue for councillors is an urgent necessity, with council tax being limited by central government due to the referendum obligation imposed by Eric Pickles, and with funding still very, very much dominated by central government powers. The LGA have taken this report very seriously and have recognised it as a fair report of working despite this. Councillors on the LGA, from all three main parties and independents, have also supported their importance for this. Sadly, the same was said of DC, the DC LG ministers who commented on it back to the LGA. The purpose of my bringing it forward to you today is firstly to make you aware of this charter, secondly to gain awareness already, secondly to gain political support for the charter and the report, but thirdly, to ask that perhaps outside this chamber, many of you could help in making sure that the findings of this are incorporated into our heart and manifest race, so that we will continually pressure the central government to perhaps cease, to help us stop and halt continuously the most centralised country in Europe. When I joined the LGA committee three or four years ago, two years ago actually, I was given this wise advice by Graham Tate, former leader of Suffolk Street, retired from his council position, and he said to me, it's not a political organisation, the LGA as such, there are in fact two parties on the LGA, here we see one in terms of two parties, the local government party and the national government party, and I owe it to you for your support as part of the local government party, to support the findings for this report, and do what we can to take it forward with the LGA, I'm sure councillor Herbert will have a likely deal with the LGA and within your parties as well, thank you.
Can I call on councillor King to second the motion?
A second motion, but it's my right to speak there, the director, that's okay.
Okay, well, which, by now, can I ask councillor Sarus, please?
It is, of course, hard to oppose this motion, which essentially reiterates both LGA and Labour Party policy, indeed, if councillor Reed would like a Labour Party membership for, I'm sure I can provide one, I have delivered quite a lot of literature about union by time, so one more would just like to do it in part. But I'm afraid it's also hard not to regard this motion as well, if I'm feeling ungenerous, to regard this motion as perhaps highest bleeding on the part of the Liberal Democrats in some desperate attempt with some blue, some clear blue water between themselves and their Tory allies. It's all well and good saying there are only two parties, there's local government versus national government, when they're part of a national government which has pursued a remorseless anti-local government agenda. Now, madam mayor, so this sort of posturing, I'm afraid, will fool nobody. Earlier on in the Liberal Democrat statement that they circulated to us but didn't actually want debated, the Lib Dems claimed that they confessed to oppose what they termed in their own document, measures that are more designed for political posturing than tangible benefits to residents. Madam Mayor, that is precisely what this motion is. Greater self-awareness on the part of the opposition would be very welcome in the years ahead.
Thank you, councillor Sarus, councillor Van Gogh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, can I add my congratulations to the rest of them that have come today, it's nice to see somebody read inside the coat as well as outside the coat. I'm a new councillor, and this is a very first occasion for me, really, but I'm a bit confused, I'm a bit confused by the whole resolution, not by its content, because its content I'm very aware of, it's very socialist, very Labour Party, I'm confused that this motion is being moved by your side, and I wondered if really you were all sitting on the wrong side, because this does not favour the ideology of a Liberal party or a national coalition where they fairly rightly govern. I wonder if Nick Cleck knows that you've moved this resolution, or is it that the Cambridge Liberals are moving away from their partisan national thinking? Are you putting down a marker that suddenly you don't agree with your own government, and you're asking us to join you in putting down that marker? Perhaps this is the first time of the group shoots of cooperation between parties that we're seeing, or is it something that your colleague, sending Romzi, losing his seat? Are you worrying that this is not really a city at ease with itself? Are you aware now, after the election, that this is a city that is divided, and that in its division is divided eventually? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Can I have councillor Sip?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for those councillors on the ruling benches who were councillors before the 22nd of May, you will know that I have spent quite a lot of time, both trying to mitigate some of the actions of the coalition government, and also attempting to work on a cross-party basis, accepting amendments while I was an executive councillor, if they were sensible and helpful. I wasn't really planning to speak today, my view was that you had your annual statement, and it's your turn to tell us what you want to do, and I was going to keep quiet. Councillor Reed has brought forward a motion that she believes in, that she submitted, as I understand it, as I seem to recall, somewhat before the elections, that this is a response to the elections, and I'm somewhat frustrated to think that people can't accept a motion on the basis of what she's submitted. The coalition has done nothing for local government, we can't pretend that it has. Councillor Reed is putting forward some proposals that are unbelievably sensible, if members on the ruling benches support what's in the motion, I would very much hope that people look at it positive, I think it's really unhelpful to try and second guess what people are putting forward in motions, but those of us, many of us on these benches, oh, sorry, well, in the Lib Dem group, have had serious concerns about certain things the coalition government has done, and have still have considered that over the years, including in my own portfolio, many times on issues of mitigating the impact of the cuts on the poorest in society, and I think some of the comments that we've made today, particularly by the members, are extremely unfair to the record of those of us who have campaigned for the poorest in the country as well, it's not just for the Liberal party to say you've done that, some of us have tried that as well. But I will shut up with one exception, which is, Madam Mayor, I apologise for not congratulating you, obviously, very glad to see you, and what I would hope we can do, I'm surprised we're shadowing councillor Owens, to see whether we can at some point make the Guildhall a somewhat more disability-friendly building, because so far, we've done a very good job, but welcome to your new first place.
Councillor Corcoran?
Thank you, thank you, and my congratulations to everybody else for your elimination, Gerry. This motion, as you've already said, is already Labour Party policy, and has been for some years, and very probably part of the reason why the regional development agencies were set up in 1997, almost half the time ago, the very regional development agencies that the coalition disbanded, is one of its first acts, as, once it was elected in 2010, so with that in mind, as it's Labour Party policy, with that in mind, it's very difficult for us to reject it, I mean, this is, this is obviously an attempt by the Liberal Democrats locally to distance themselves from the National Party, whose policy is the exact opposite as part of the coalition government, and as Cambridge City returned the lowest anti-union vote in the country, this looks like premature ejecta. On behalf of Dr Huppert, this would be, if we could see through this, it would be naive of the opposition to think the general populace would not, but just in case, I'm pointing this out, and therefore, as I have said, there is nothing in the motion, in reality, that we can disagree with, and as such, we will be in support.
Thank you. Can we call councillor Sarus, please?
I'm sure I can follow that. Oh, like councillor Speer, like councillor Speer, I wasn't going to speak on this either, because clearly, people over here have told you exactly what I wanted, but if councillor Speer said, oh, but this was submitted before the local elections, you said, this was submitted before the local elections, like that's the, the elections we're referring to, hasn't this been submitted before the next general election, has it? Which is exactly what this is about, this is about, this is your first, this is your first matter, on, 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 on the way, you're vain hope of maintaining Julian Huppert as the MP for Cambridge, the MP for Cambridge who quite often votes in favour of Tory things within the House of Parliament, gets on the train, gets on the bus, gets into Cambridge, and then tells people how he's opposed to them, so we, we know the game, there's nothing here, as councillor Corcoran said, that we, we would disagree with, which is why we're going to support it, which is why we are going to vote for it, but, you know, if you're going to put motions forward, thanks for the easy target, I mean, I do feel a little bit guilty about sort of attacking you over such an obvious point, but hey, you put it there for us to do it.
Okay, councillor Herbert?
Sorry, can I, I did want to ask, sorry, I was.
Councillor Biffers, sorry.
Not getting off to the start here, I apologise. If this is what it's like when we agree.
We've been there before.
Anyone else remember St George's Day motion?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to respond to a few things, I'm very pleased it sounds like you actually hopefully you voted in favour of this, I'm going to let you into a different secret, another thing, this motion or the contents of it, and the contents of the report from the LGA, is going to win a single vote for any party anywhere, except amongst the very heavy sad political people, you probably all know about it, and I do agree with that as a mission, this isn't, this isn't about the general election, it's about trying to lobby central government, whatever view it is now, whatever view it is next time, and let's go, whatever view it is, we don't have Pickles as DC, DC LG, whatever view it is next time, to make sure that actually they listen to local government and the need for local government. Labour's record on this is not perfect, to answer this with a ring fence, centralised control about what they could be spent on, I am informed by my colleague, in front of me, as we proposed under the last day, from about a quarter, to about three quarters, that's a lot, and one of the welcome things the coalition government did was to abolish the ring fence, to answer, we just wish they'd left us more of the money for state, but they did that. It's not about putting distance between us and our Tory allies, firstly, I don't have any Tory allies, I'm. It's because the, anyway, it's not about, I don't have one, but the Tory party on the DC, in DCLG disagree with this, the Tory party in the LGA agree with this, it's Tory party policy in the LGA as well as Labour party policy, and that scares me a little, but whenever you put Tory and Labour party, they always notice and think I should be being included to be controlled, but it is actually good sensible stuff, and it's stuff we should be doing. This country is ridiculously centralised, it's the most centralised country in the EU in terms of funding, other than Malta, and there's a reason why Malta beats us, I'm a bit embarrassed, but we're even more centralised than Luxembourg, for goodness sake, so, put aside any concerns you have as to that, we're trying to do partisan politics and put clear blue water between us and the Tories, this is not about the election, because nobody cares, it's about trying to lobby our parties, trying to lobby your party, and making sure that the local government, that it survives whoever wins the next general election, and let's hope Pickles is gone, whatever happens, thank you very much.
Councillor Herbert?
I'll say something negative and something positive, the negative is that you have had a lot of government ministers, it's not as if it's been Eric Pickles, what happened to Andrew Stenell? He was, he was the minister when the Subpoor Localism Act was implemented, which actually increased the centralism of planning. Nick Cleck said that that was a great move, and it's on record as saying that the changes in planning are a great move, there's also on record as saying that the Growing Infrastructure Act was a great move to give, to achieve more giveaways on brownfield sites, so that we lost more housing delivery, so that's the negative, the other negative is, I don't, I mean, I'm a, I'm a European, and I think a lot of people in this city are, but I don't think we need to go to Europe to actually find out whether or not we're good at local government, I think we need to sort that out basically ourselves. Yes, the LGA under Conservatives has said local government needs to upgrade their freedoms, and certainly now that Labour is the largest party on the LGA, it's clear that that's what we need to propose. Some big changes have got to happen, I don't, you've not assisted or challenged the Treasury rule, which says that local government capital expenditure has to be included in national calculations, so until this, if we're spending something on, if we're spending some money for borrowing money to build more affordable housing, why does that have to be part of the national treasury rules? So we won't support the motion, but we will be looking out, and we will be looking at, as councillor Sarus said, over the next 12 months, for evidence of political posturing, you introduced the principle of political posturing into your annual statement, we're happy to adopt that, but we're also happy to support this motion.
My life, please, I didn't have a right to base my position, I do, sorry, sorry, this is important, thank you. It's my first experience of opposition, I've only, I've either failed to be elected or been in front of the council, so this is a good learning experience for me, you know, I think the message here, I know she tried not to speak in my speech, but, you know, the very high-ups that came back, which are fair enough, which criticized some of Eric Pickles' decisions at DCLG, which I've criticized myself in my motion, but I think the fact of the matter is, you know, Labour running this country for a very long time, and it was under Labour, but things were ever more centralised, and yet, all like you say, I'm absolutely delighted to hear that this is for Labour policy now, I'm absolutely delighted to hear that now we'll be in the Labour Party manifesto, that the recommendations of this charter will be adopted by a future Labour government. Great, well done, you're fantastic, I would just like to mention that we have, in fact, made a lot of representations of councillor Herbert, unless you sadly watch Liberal Democrat conferences on television during the day, you'll hear us speaking on issues about, yes, we are, that's why I'm actually slightly interested in what that says, if you mind I can hear it out. The state of local government is not a function of the last four years, though, that was proved in a couple of ways, it's worse in some ways, but it's a fundamental issue which I'm afraid, Labour government, as well, has not contributed to well, to over, over very many years, and needs to be completely new approach, I'm very delighted to hear that this is not Labour party policy.
Okay, thank you very much, can we move for the both now? All those in favour? Please, for us, I'm. That's you, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go to motion B, I call on councillor Roberts to move motion A, please.
Right, I'll try and make this brief possible. Okay, absolutely everyone will know, that's.
Um, okay, absolutely everyone will know pest control service has been probably the backbone of a normal campaign over the last few months. Um, I'll leave, in terms of finance, I'll leave that for a second. The man who chaired the board was councillor Ours. But what I would say is a few brief things about this movement, obviously. Uh, I'm sure we all by now have quite a grip on what this is about. Um, it was a proposal, I mean, it was actually hearing councillor Dick talk about distancing ourselves from Eric Pickles. Or cessation of pest control for number one, Eric Pickles' hit list for all good councillors and so on. And unfortunately, you decided to take the bait, no pun intended. Um, it was a good ego. Um, there's a, we have another point for this, the reason why we're here, first of all. First of all, it's cost economy. Um, I spent yesterday the pest control team, luckily, I did, I was a part of it. And I asked them, I obviously have very good relations with people in the private pest control service and have a good idea of costs and so on, charge. And I asked them how much, if you think £10,000 at last, they targeted some of the most unfortunate people who couldn't afford pest control service and they said, we lucked it to last for three months. Um, now, what's very interesting about our trip, myself and the pest control team, was the amount of people who went to me, yours as well as ours and co, we fought for. Um, but more importantly, but more importantly, the amount of work they do. Essentially, our pest control workers, uh, it's something I didn't really appreciate until yesterday. Essentially, social workers in a way. They're going around, they're listening to people up to six times for a few treatments. Um, they're dealing with the elderly, they're dealing with people who can and can't afford pests. We went to one property in Arby where the neighbour on one side had a building of waste in their, in their garden and had a clear rat problem, we found three rats in the property from the tracts that were set previously. And the neighbour was like, more than afford pest control, I asked, and I went round. And, uh, but to them, they were able to afford pest control and have solved the problems, obviously the nest was not solved. Now, there are certain things that, you know, very hard decisions have to be made over the next few years. And we've said that sadly along the way, that would mean that potentially people would have to lose their job. But we're not willing to play with what we think is a public health issue. Um, and also an issue which we think is very, very dear to our hearts. When this was first announced, um, obviously as was having a report note, it made the paper, the front page several times. But before it even did got to that stage, my box, as I said it several times, was round with the announcement, everyone in the city in Southend as well, they've already got rid of the pest control. So, people were saying, don't do it, this makes no sense, it, it's crazy. And so, in deciding our position on this, we listened to, we listened to their, their work representatives and you listened and so on. And, and we decided that we weren't willing to do it. We weren't, there are many things that we do to critique this chamber, but this is one of the things we said, this is our right line, we are not willing to, to do it. There is not a saving to be had. Uh, now, adding you to that, having met the pest control team, I believe yesterday were one of the first that I did come to return as councillor. Um, what was very clear to us is we had two very upset officers. Now, I don't blame you for that, that's not, you know, it's just part of partisan politics. But, uh, but what does agree with me, in my position, is the fact that they've never been near a councillor. They've never met a councillor, they've seen a councillor, never been used in any way. You think about all this, uh, investment of preventive treatment, they said, all that moves to sit for us. We used to go to preventive treatment, one of the main walls we used to work at preventive treatment was in London. Big drafty houses, lots of rivers and all the rest, a big riverbank. Um, and, and as soon as, as soon as that preventive treatment started to have a tangible effect on the numbers of rats and pests, and, and in surrounding areas, they said, right, boys, you lost your jobs. We don't believe you. And so, as a result, we're very much expanding the city, uh, trying to stay ahead of the curve. Now, in each of the city, what was very clear as well is that the only time they ever had physically met a councillor was when they went round one of their houses to sort their own rat problem. And, um, the lesser way or best way to remain. Um, and what I would say about that is talking to them, I, I, you know, we had a very frank meeting, the two of them, myself. And they were, they were very disruptive, I thought, going in, they would ask a whole range of things. You know, pay your rights, better working conditions, you know, Mondays off, this, that and the other. And they asked for a very simple set of things. They, they, the boys in town weren't happy to say, even though they knew we were coming in after the election. Uh, they weren't, the way they were, they asked a very simple thing. They said, look, we, we worked here between us for 62 years. 62 years, first four years of preventive treatment, we've never been given a desk. We've never been given a letter. When I went out in the pest control team yesterday, one of them had his toothbrush and his toothpaste on the dashboard, which had no one to put it apart from in the car, the cab, that he drove around in. So, he could be minty fresh as he met people out and about, uh, doing his work. Now, it is very clear that, um, whilst this is a service, it's highly, I mean, the only conclusion, the reason why I said it up, I think, if you don't believe my perspective, is because you knock on doors. I see the lap out of his chest and that's right. And it's been coming up on doors all the time. I know, and we made our position, we're in full practice, I'm surprised that, you know, I'm very interested to see how you vote personally. Um, and, and, and talking to the, the pest control, well, I, you know, I, I think that he, as councillor Dick probably appreciate, in working with them, how he developed the ward list, and how he put back in some of that preventive treatment. Um, I mean, I'm absolutely shocked, some of the, we went round on our list, our chip list, the places that we had to go. I think there were six visits in three hours. We actually went to them. Because the pest control team liked to pop by people en route unofficially to check tracks, to check a warning book, to check that it's not an issue for, in one case, it means there is an old lady who couldn't lift the brickwork that was holding in the trap. Um, just to check if there was a rocky ramp there, so they weren't going to visit that at the end of days. And was anyone following my personal see? I took a picture of one of the rats, it was, it was a foot, it was a foot, it was a leg, it was a round. So, 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 why I would say is, in, in a week, which was just being released by the University of Minnesota, shows that rats are capable of remorse. I think, I think it would be nice seeing that rats are in your name the day of your political party, but you too. I'll show some remorse. I'll go with this.
Okay, can I call on, uh, the councillor Ours to second the motion?
I'm trying to get this across, sir. Um, and I'll keep. I'll take a shower in the morning to talk about that. Um, no, I can't, short and sweet. Um, in terms of the financial relation of this, obviously, it's our, it is our belief that if, if this is a, a, a cease, we're not sure that we can actually save that money. Um, they said it in any way because of the obligations the council have had to renew contract with its own, uh, parts and so on. However, for budgetary purposes, we have to work on the figures of the last vote. Um, and you can see in the table, um, by motion, we will fund this by, um, reducing the under spend element of the trade and settlement conferences budget. Um, routine under spend, despite the fact that a lot of, the, the great deal of training and improvement of skills that started the council does go on. Um, and it's linked to wider work that we're going to have to do when the, you know, variance is now to come up fairly soon. Um, to look at some of the good thing fact in the budget, we have under spent every year as a council. Um, and you have to start thinking after a while, is this a bit of a policy or is this, is this an action? And so, we, one thing we will be doing, in addition to the type of work that I've already mentioned on Treasury management that I've been on, so, we'll be looking at a routine under spend. So, this is, this is bought forward because we needed to, um, to make this budgetary change quickly given the situation of the pest control rise and the potential redundancy situation and so on. So, we bought this forward and it's perfectly affordable, to check out by the financing system. It says, this money can be spent any way, you know, so, and it strikes me as a little bit strange. We would be cutting services, councillor Ours has so evidently outlined, how important this has got presented to the city. Why we did ever put forward cutting this when we had under spending the budget, money that wasn't, wasn't being used. Uh, it strikes me as a point, it's also about the religion of socialism and language priorities. And this really should be a priority. Um, and, and as you will notice from the budgetary table, it does mean, we're making this change now, because we have to. Which mean, and obviously the saving in terms of the trade conferences and settlement budget is great, particularly in the first year, also although we have the actual amount of money to, to close the pest control cut. Um, but that balance and that saving will be looked at later in our budgetary changes in the context of all budgetary changes we're making. And we'll help to, the, the fact that, you know, ongoing is actually saving more than possible. We can give some of that slack, we'll fund some of that, some, some, uh, level of ongoing proposals in the July and maybe in addition to some of the other savings we've already outlined, um, we'll, we'll have my committee. I think the last thing to say, I'm sure councillor Ours mentioned, is that, um, over the last year or so, I believe, um, the pest control team have started charging for mice treatments, um, in order to try to see if it could be an impact of a very basic, um, uh, street. And it basically, the conclusion to did raise any impact, or less of any, I mean, lost the protein or something. It certainly didn't do what was intended. Um, so, we, so, there's the kind of, the, the, the safety of pest control, so, if you like, you can certainly to the basis of it, which is useful, which is, of mice to treat on some basis, as rats essentially, but the stories of people who turned forward this control treatment, um, who had, who had mice, who bring up, so, who've got rats, very small, furry, coffee pants. And I think the pest control team have come out anyway, and I'm not sure whether they charged a lot. The point is that it's pointless charging for mice, if you haven't charged for rats, so we will go back to the old pieces. Which as I said, quite happy, the vote treatment patients did, so it did raise a net, to net funds in the first place. Um, so, yeah, so this is, as, you know, we referenced earlier in the role, how are you going to fund some of your changes? Well, you'll see in July, I'll have a month funded, majority funded. This is an example of sensible saving in order to protect the essential service. And I hope that you vote in this motion.
Uh, councillor Jones?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, and I might be the only person.
Might, might be.
Maybe, right. Um, and I might be the only person in the chamber with a bit of caveat about your elevation, because of the distinct lack of supply of sweets circulating in the chamber. I'm going to find a way, way forward on that one. Um, can I say?
There's a volunteer speaking.
Yeah, well, maybe, in a minute. We're very proud of our five over Arby, I have to say, and thanks to the election of councillor Perry. Um, we can, we can truly say that. I have to say something though about Tim Ward, who personally I've got on very well with. Um, he was a councillor for Arby for 14 years and served people in Arby, um, as best he could. And I think he did a really good job for many people. He was very inclusive in many respects on case work issues, when he didn't really have to. So, he popped me in and I think my colleague emailed, which was necessarily something he really had to do. He also, of course, supplied chocolate to our, our council chamber, so I'm going to miss him on that fund as well. On, on the, on the motion itself, um, there's a couple in Arby, I don't think it's the same couple that councillor Roberts preferred, because it's the couple I think I talked to at some length over many years actually, but two years ago. They had a serious issue with a neighbour who, and inside the neighbour's fence was a massive festering pile of rubbish. Uh, and the number of rats that as a result that gathered in that area, obviously went into their gardens, other gardens and so forth, meant that I was providing, supported them on referring, referring them to both City Hanks North and to the Pest Control Service. Um, this is a couple I've been back to seeing since and I have to say, obviously, they were pretty pleased that the council were going to keep the service, which they, assuming the vote goes the way we hope it does, which I would agree, I think, is a crucial public service that ought to be provided by local authorities. Uh, and they were pretty pleased that, that the outcome would go about. Um, can I also mention, I would back declare an interest on the Unison member. But on the Unison involvement in this, in this sort of campaign, I suppose, um, often I think trade unions are portrayed as essentially trying to defend their members, the staff, pay conditions and service of employees. But actually, very often the case, and it is often not given proper, uh, due in the media, that they're often as much concerned about the service and the service that their members involved in, the services they provide and often public services. Uh, and I think this is most definitely the case in this situation. So, I hope there's not going to be any amendments withdrawing the, uh, the commitment and the recognition that Unison put into bringing all our, all members here attention to this crucial service. But I think they play an absolutely crucial role. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hickman?
It's a bit of a stand to withdraw my amendment.
Councillor Hart?
Very good. I, when I found out, I like, the pest control line. When I, when I found out the pest control service was cut, uh, along, because, because a few months before that, it was used to service, but not from my, my brother. Because they, the school, um, which backed onto our house, they opened up a new exit onto, um, onto a main road. And then, because it's a minute, they disturbed wildlife and rats and, and married everyone, but they're not bothering them. And, and it was causing a problem because the children were going out and stroking rats and, 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 you know, very much. And it was her. So, I moved you round Pest Control and of course they looked like a lot of them, they, who owns their land, of course. And, cut it over the long story short, because when you go to land ownership issues, it's typically on public land. It's against counties, it's against housing, city, and anyway, the Pest Control Services, they dealt with probably very, very quickly. I was really, or took some profits actually, how quickly they came round, they laid traps, they checked the traps and they came back to make sure a dung nest, which is between, between a fence and a hedge, another hedge. So, the ownership was up there, I don't know who owns it. And so, I just want to, I, I noticed this at the last, but it would be if the opposition councillors would support this motion, even though it goes against the sport, then who is policies? I mean, again today, it's, it's public health and it's really about politics.
Can you say the question first?
I'll give you really brief, again, I am. Um, we'll take you back to November 2011, take, tell you a little horror story, which we've had about two minutes. Um, about 300 yards, maybe a bit more, 400 yards from our house, there was a development from a brownfield site. That resulted in an influx of a humongous amount of these creatures. My wife phoned me up one, one morning at work and she says, there's rats in trees. Can you imagine that? So, I came home and no kidding, not, not even 20, 25 feet from our back door, there was rats in trees. We counted 14 rats in the trees and in the hedges. So, of course, it went to naming the properties, the properties as well. But my point is that this is a horrendous thing. It was like something out of a Hitchcock movie. I, I really wish I filmed it, it was absolutely horrendous. She wouldn't go in the garden for two months. Now, a lot of you know her, she was here today and of course you'll know her from being here. She's, um, she's not exactly that backwood and coming forward. She's a lot shy of me, but, um, you know, she's a pretty feisty lady. She would not even go into the garden for two months. Now, what happened with these guys, without, as we came to know them, the rat catchers. They, um, came to see her, they knew I was at work every day. And my point being here, that these guys called in about twice a week for around about two months, just to check. And it took about six weeks to actually get rid of them. The following winter, we still had a couple come back. And do you know what they did? On the anniversary, when they first came, they phoned us and said, are they back? And they were right, they were. So, they came back and they eradicated them again. These are really great blokes.
I'll do the short story. Um, this, this was never an ideologically motivated party. It was just one of the great many difficult decisions that we made in our last country back. And I'm sure people remember, there's a lot of things in there, that if we had more money, we would have done differently. It's quite clear, as we made this quite important part of the election campaign, we let, we asked for it on this. That's not what it's good. So, we need to put our hands on it and say, do it by all means, we, we should not try and solve that. I should stress, however, that this council, I'm sure councillor Hart, is not about the public health role of the council. It was about revising domestic rat catching service. It wasn't about the environmental health role of the council now. Rats in the public realm aren't necessarily dealt with by this service. Rats in commercial spaces aren't dealt with by this service normally. They can go as commercial contractors have to do. So it wasn't about that issue. Now, you're going to point to the left of me in a moment, because... We are going to have to abstain, and I just want to explain why. We can't vote for a motion for two reasons. Firstly, the first of all, our vast amount of data, obviously, is good, fine, no problem with that, but that political, certainly alerting the casters to the dangers of this task when in fact, actually, as I just outlined, other councils have already done this, and there has been no noticeable public health impact in those councils. The second reason is because we don't like what you're cutting to pay for it. We want to know why the council's any budget is under spent, because actually, the council's saying, council staff are key to the success of this council in everything it does. They are the biggest casters, and I have to say, I've shared that this part of councillor Oliver's house, some of what he said, I'm talking outside the chamber about that, right? See if they'd be willing to meet a little democratic, our thought leaders, I can imagine in their shoes, they may not. So the start is we can't support it for that reason as well. So as I said, we're going to take the leaf out of the councillor's opposition annual and abstain.
That's what happens when you say that's true.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief, I just want to say that the role of Unison and trade unions generally, in actually drawing attention to the need to provide decent public services, is, is, is one which, as was mentioned by councillor Oliver, and I think a few others too, should be understated. And the issue which has been, not just that's coming to the fore, not just because of the issue is, not just the, the issue about the, sorry, I'll just repeat, sorry, it was not just about the, the cuts in service, but also the way in which the work has been treated. And I think that's now come to the surface. I think it's very, very important that this motion not only reinstates the service, but also presses a reset button in relation to the, the way which the employers, the employees have been treated by the employer, the council. And it's good to see that this motion will provide a letter issuing an apology, not just about the way we should have been treated, but also on how they've been treated. So I reckon it's a great motion, of course. It's great that we're going to be implementing this straight away, and also it presses a reset button, so the staff can be part of the council and be seen to be valued by the council.
councillor Oliver?
I feel very disappointed to hear councillor Pitt say that you're abstaining on it. It's just sort of fundamental, important service that we were providing, and I think it was, it instantly hit all of us, I think, the surprise. And as, as has been said, at the end of the day, we're just representatives here of the people, and certainly when we all were together and, and had this as discussion, like individually, ward by ward, you know, we had examples, and we've heard from some of the colleagues here, from their boards, it, it is, it resonates, it's a public health issue, one of which I think the city council has had a responsibility, and to take the risk of not staying on top of it, what are you actually risking there? Well, for one thing, fire diseases, you know, we have waterways going through Cambridge, and I know taking my children to, for those with young children we know, the paddling pools in our city are brilliant, and Lantley and, and certainly my local one. And I remember sort of coming to you there, having these young children, and somebody mentioning that, that kind of fear of fire diseases, which is something, like this, and it's rats, essentially. There are all sorts of things, as I say, that are, you know, real life, health issues that we need to stay on top of, and to be getting rid of. Two guys with all their experience, so we've heard, it's fragile, come down, and now have had two guys. Councillor Hart made a comment about, knowing firsthand, about the surprise of the speed and efficiency by which they reacted, and that was next to me as well. So certainly in my local primary school, they had a petebus incident, and they made exactly the same comment. So I think all of us, and as I say, I think it was, in my view, weren't listening to your residents, because certainly as soon as it came up, it came up time and again for my resident in Normandy, and just in this last year, I believe so, there has been anomalies in all instances, just from listening to people.
councillor Kendra?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a couple of points. Firstly, the issue in terms of the efficiency or the reduction that you're proposing in the training budgets in relation to this motion is a very important one. Obviously, new administration, one can argue it's a little rash, because the review of the outturn is still to be done in committee, but look, you're a new administration, you want to prove that point to us politically in relation to the item of the pest control, and that's fine, but you have to remember, because there are more priorities on Eric Pickles' list in addition to pest control. For example, training budgets made the top five, and importantly, so importantly, the critical thing that you'll find in the administration, as councillor Pitt noted, on people, investing in the people, investing in the people not just for today, so that they are developed in the medium, long term. And then just, just let me, if I could just finish, if I could just finish, because the most telling thing, you talk, councillor Johnson talked about resetting the relationship within unions, resetting the relationship. I'd like to think from this side of the chamber, the relationship within unions was not a bad one, it was one where we understood our positions, they weren't necessarily the same efficient, but we often came to a compromise and agreement. So let me just quote you from a recent Guardian article, which talks about the challenges facing local government. "Unions are concerned, however, that such short-sighted attitudes to training fail to fully understand the medium and long-term financial benefits of staff development. That is seen as a misstriver." Now, who said that? Christine Lewis, who is a national officer of Unison. So if that's the approach you're going to take to the relationship with the unions, I hope Unison locally support that cut in the development, in the development and training budget, because that will lead you down to a fundamental conflict with your supporters, and in particular, Unison quoted it, quoted in the motion locally.
councillor Ashton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a bit of a tongue, because I won't speak sometimes, but the things that have come out are unbelievable, and I will try and promote that we get proper recording in the council chambers, so we can record what people say. When I pressed again, councillor, the Liberals were very keen on consultation, consultation, and I pointed out it didn't happen, so it's nice to see now, they've just not mentioned their doctrines, but they've come up with another one now, Liberal Democrat values of Cambridge, Cambridge where people matter, a city of citizens feel they can influence public decision-making, and are equally keen to the individual community. So they feel they can influence, and councillor Pitt almost said it earlier, he nearly said, "Sorry, he nearly said, 'Sorry, we've got it wrong this time round.'" But I won't put words in his mouth. You got it wrong, but you know what? We're not going to actually vote to, to say we joined with you and put it right. He said to us, "Get on with it," yeah, and now you're going abstaining. So why not for once? And, and what did councillor Pitt say earlier? "Where we can agree on things, we'll work together." So let's show that today, now, on this pest control motion, let's work together, let the residents of this city see that we all agree, pest control is something we all agree on, and let's have a unanimous vote. Thank you.
councillor Scott?
Hello, Madam Mayor, welcome. It's good to see you there. So councillor Kendra's obviously a very experienced politician, speaking of stuff fair, nothing to do with rats, but I mean, bring it back to basics, just in a single parody, being said in my mind, you know, they've got a rat problem, what are they going to do, they've got the money to go into the banter, they need someone to help them, need help. So I think this is about the social policy really, and look after people, and you, councillor Pitt, with what you said about abstaining, but I think, you know, you need to think about folks with a conscience. This is a serious issue, you know, I, I've got a family, and you know, you might have money to do stuff like, you know, get rid of rats, but that doesn't mean we'll do it. You might make a mistake, you put rat poison down, and then your kids eat it or something. I think these things happen, and I think if you don't take a responsible attitude towards the people of this city, then we're going to have a problem. And I'd also like to say thank you to the Lib Dems for bringing me here, because obviously I'm a mayor of London in the Lake Forest, only recently, and it's what you've done nationally and locally that has really brought me here today. It's just a mess. You know, I've been here for twenty years, okay, nine million in the London banks, six hundred thousand pounds for the folk festival, and then 2.3 million miscalculation, and now you don't know anything, you've got a budget for training, you can't even use it, and we can use that to get the service going. It's ridiculous, so thank you.
Okay, just to say that I have to leave here by twenty-six, so, five to six, sorry, I'm a bit tired, so if we could, you know, get away from time, okay? So the links, I've got two more people that want to speak. Okay, so anyway, Perry's it, please.
In respect of your timings, Madam Mayor, I'll keep it short, that I do respect the training budget, but however, somebody who's going to go for training might find it very hard to focus on that training when their house is full of rats.
Just want to say, Madam Mayor, my congratulations on your election, thank you. And the only other thing I want to say is, as the only people in all of the council are fully supportive of this motion, that takes a light touch, thank you.
Congratulations. I should be very quick. We can agree on money for pest control, and we can agree on the requirement for a public health function. That doesn't necessarily lead us to retaining these two people. If you get about 180 private treatments for this money, so it's purely a question of priorities, rather than what these people brought us to.
councillor Reed? Yeah, I'm very surprised to hear your remarks seemingly not understanding councillor Pitt's, a completely very clear, crystal clear explanation of our position here, the various sort of steps towards it, but the fact is, is you and I are the current of the council, and you are to make these decisions as to what you take away and what you add back in, and, you know, those who don't expect us to come and, yeah, kind of, you know, of course, you step away. These are hard decisions, and you're going to have to make, you're presenting one here, let's look, let's look forward and have an honorable respite when you put forward a whole set of things, but don't expect us to endorse taking away something we would have taken away.
Okay, the last one now is councillor Big.
Madam Mayor, councillor Pitt has outlined our position very effectively, in my opinion. I would just like to ask one question, which hopefully can be picked up in a response to this motion, and that is that when this was debated in the course of the pluses early this year, I asked for a report to come to the committee cycle in the autumn, which was asking, answering the question, why council offices are apparently not able to carry out the training that they, that they repeatedly planned to do. Taking a, councillor Kendra's point, we do take investments in people very seriously. Obviously the case that we have a repeated under spend, but it's pretty important that we ask ourselves why money is repeatedly planned by council offices when they assemble their work, budget year after year, that they don't have a chance to use. I think it would be very important to know that the administration across the way there was maintaining the movement, to take that report, bring it to the council in the autumn cycle, so that we can understand what we can strengthen our staff taking the training.
In response to councillor Big, take it to the relevant committee. I'm not in charge of money, I'm just in charge of service, and what I'd say is that... I define that, I really define that. We've chosen to target pests, you've chosen pests, that's what we established today. We targeted frontline services, whereas you want more backroom training, you know, that shows to us, it's quite funny that you want four paragraphs removed from a motion in a city that's one of the most unionised cities in the country, one of, the city with the highest level of public sector like this, and, and, and a city which many of those public sector workers, "Oh, preu, you are new, so why remove the reference to Unison?" But that will stop you from voting for. Now, to answer, to quickly, to quickly answer a few questions, if you had a chance, sorry. Basically, the reason why we don't have, you talk about the data, you know, on the amount of rats, is if you genuinely cared about seeing the public health update, you would have commissioned a survey done at a point when we had the pest control, and then commissioned a survey at a point we didn't have it, so you could see a comparable control and a parrow. You didn't do that, so don't try and sell it as, as, as what it, what it isn't. The reason why we find it very hard to find data on pests and on levels of pest control and so on, is because much of that data, because like many councils, is in the private sector, it's split up, it's a not, it's different little companies doing services, they don't share the data, commercial, this is the problem with the commercial sector when it comes to doing things like this, and I would add, on top of all of that, I mean, I think it's also important, we want to talk about rats, these people are dealing with cockroaches, bedbugs, fair rats, and a whole range of services, as councillor Owens has pointed out, we're, we're bringing back a universal service, and in going around with them, you know, all the time, going around, taking a review of, and trumpeting, and looking at the preventative work, I think, and councillor Owens is very right, there are many people with a mouse in a house, an old lady who essentially can't afford pest control, I know councillor Edgar, I can see we're going to probably clench you a bit, because you don't develop your own sign belief, because you're now going into 180 private sector services. Now, I'm going to tell you this, that would give you thirty, thirty-six per house, in the worst case, that would give you, in the worst case, thirty people in the city of the local government can inspect some of their pest control, first people, city of over 120,000 people. Now, this isn't some gold-placed service, this is, this should be the bear, this is the cobbler's, this should be what we expect as a council. I remember the original report, I've got a bit of it here, and it talked about, you know, that this is something which you could just do, and this isn't. It's so much more than that, and to pretend that this is some, with their hand dragging, really want to do it, there's no ideology. You're in government, for God's sake. It's full of ideology. You were connected to the same spending plans that are still in 2010, and now you turn the whole thing around, and you're in favor of everything, you can't suppose. It is the filter down, the trickle down, which you guys found weekly, obviously, the trickle down of essentially your hatred of the private sector, anything, any spending on the private sector, then there's a commercial side that can, that can do it, and as we see, as I, you know, go around with pest control, go eat them. You'll find it not concerned how much work they do, you'll find it sounds how much, how many of those people when you go around, can't afford this. Now, as councillor Pitt, you know, the environmental aspect of our portfolio, shadow, etc., is now John Giddon part of that, so that's something which you should welcome in terms of focusing minds on the pest control. But what I want to finish with is, I just find this far astray. You know you're wrong. We know you're wrong, everyone else knows you're wrong, just having a good performance here, everyone, every, every, just, if you genuinely, councillor Akis, can you draw the line in the sand? We all did it a lot of times, and you're going to do exactly the same to us, and you'll enjoy it as much as we do.
can we go for the vote, please? Can we now go for the vote, please? Can I have all those in favour? Thirty-six, okay. All those against? Right, okay, thank you very much, okay. Uh, there's no more questions, so I'll go straight on to agenda seventeen, record of members' attendance. The members go to the record of members' attendance at the committee, subcommittee and working party meetings during two thousand thirteen, fourteen. The next meeting of the council is on the twenty fifth of July, two thousand and fourteen, and they close the annual general meeting. Don't call for on court.